Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, December 12, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. Ma'am, would you please take the roll call?
Motley.
Here.
Friedle.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Biondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Berenzelli.
Here.
Cuffy.
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to everybody that's in the room this evening. We have a full agenda for the city council meeting, and then at 6:01, we will recess the city council meeting and start our tooth and taxes meeting, what's required by law, which to do at 6:01 PM this evening. The next item on the agenda is going to be the public forum. And if you're here to talk about the property taxes or the budget, I would ask that you wait until 6:01, when we have the layout, the budget for you, layout what the, what our proposed levy is going to be, and give you any opportunity to speak at that time. But if you're not here to talk about that, if you, anybody else that likes to speak today's, today's the time. It's item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. Is anybody in the audience that would like to address the council this evening, please come forward? And thank you. Would you please turn that little mic on with the green and state your name for the record? And welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilors and staff. My name is Sarah Priest. I am the owner and operator of Masabi Recreation. I believe before you on your agenda today, you will potentially have a letter of support to help our efforts in cooperation with the Iron Range Partnership for Sustainability in our wanting to have a winter city for all. Trails in Alcott Park and on the golf course that can enable citizens of Virginia and the Iron Range to experience outdoor recreation in snowshoeing, biking, skiing, and also sports in which you can play with your dog. So I just want to thank you as a body to consider that motion. I think it will greatly help us in our efforts to receive some grants, which will enable us to groom those trails and also get some signage, things that will, I think, improve our fair city. So thanks for your efforts, and I appreciate your service.
Yeah, I thank you, sir. If you just wait here for just a moment.
Sure.
I'll read the letter now, seeing as you've already addressed it. It's a letter from our parking and rec director, Brian Silver, and probably look for a motion from the council as well. It's a letter dated December 12 today. Dear Ms. Riffle, she's one of the co-chairs or chair, I don't know what her exact title is, for the Partnership for Sustainable, the Iron Range Partnership for Sustainability. It is my pleasure to write this letter on behalf of the city of Virginia in support of the grant that the Iron Range Partnership for Sustainability is writing on behalf of the Masabi Recreation for the creation of a fat bike, snowshoe, and Nordic cross-country ski courses in Virginia. Virginia Parks and Recreation is thrilled to be able to partner with Masabi Recreation in providing locations throughout our parks for these great outdoor winter activities. In our discussions with Masabi Recreation and the Iron Range Partnership for Sustainability, we are ready to assist in the layout of a two-mile Nordic and snowshoe trail at the Virginia Golf Course and a .8 tenths of a mile fat bike and snowshoe trail in Alcott Park. Outdoor recreation offers a multitude of benefits for physical, mental, and social health. Spending time in nature and engaging in physical activity can significantly improve our overall well-being and quality of life. The health and wellness benefits of outdoor recreation are numerous, including reduction in depression and improved mood, added motivation to exercise, mental restoration, and increased focus and attention. It is my opinion that the citizens of the city of Virginia and the surrounding communities will benefit from this purpose project. I look forward to working with and continue to support Masabi Recreation and the Iron Range Partnership for Sustainability as they engage with us and the community and improve their services and infrastructure that the public can utilize. I fully support this application and hope you will give it full consideration. Sincerely, Brian Silver, parking and rec director for the city of Virginia, and Sarah Priest, the owner and operator of Masabi Recreation. So I would entertain a motion from the council to fully endorse this project.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Motley moves that to approve. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Anything more to add, Sarah?
Yes, I guess I would say that we are collecting a list of names at the store, people who are interested in being involved. We have a groomer set up to volunteer his time, and we've been putting our heads together around the actual route and things like that, and where signage might go, and if we might need fencing. And so I really think that this is going to be a greater effort when we have more participation. So if you are at all interested in being involved, we really welcome you to join that effort. So please stop by the store and give us your name so that we can get a robust group of people to really participate in this effort fully.
And for the very few people who don't know where you are, would you give us your address?
Thank you. We are located on the north side, 720 Ninth Street North, still formerly the L and M Building. So we're slowly making some great improvements. And while I have the mic, I'll just also thank the Virginia Economic Development Authority, who provided us some funds to be able to do, in part, along with the I triple R B, I'll always call it that, through AEOAs, to be able to make some significant improvements on our metal roof, which had been significantly leaking. So thank you for that, too.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry.
Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley.
I had the pleasure of visiting with Sarah on the phone last night. I am so excited about this. I think this is great for our city. So thank you so much for putting forth the effort. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, do you anticipate this happening once it snows this year at all, or?
Right. Could all of you please put your fingers together and do a little dancing, bring us some snow? We're really hopeful that we can get it off the ground this, this winter with a little more snow. We currently have a snowshoe workshop scheduled at 2:00 PM, free. We've got demos available if there's going to be any snow to use them. And then currently, unless we decide to postpone, we have a winter celebration, which we were going to be featuring the trails for the 30th of December. But stay tuned, watch our Facebook and news for updates of that. But yeah, so our goal is to have this ASAP. Our volunteer groomer is Al Jurenic. He's been grooming on his own, the lake that he lives on, and so he's got some experience. We are, he's been using a homemade sled, and so part of this grant application is for official grooming equipment that will make it really possible to have a classic track, skate track, fat bike, snowshoe track, and again, have that space be welcome to dogs because we've added dog-powered sports as a thing. So we'll have plenty of space, but just depending on the snow.
My other suggestion is that we have a beautiful greenhouse that's nice and warm, and the new friends of the greenhouse board will probably be willing to work with you when you hold events and utilize that space as possible warming or that kind of stuff. So I just want to put that out there for you, too. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a whirlwind, and there's still a lot of loose ends. And so we're, again, looking for more people to help with some of these efforts, but thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors and staff. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. You, too. Move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be acted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on November 28, 2023, and the special committee, the home meeting, that was held on December 5, 2023. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 23-023, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3 is approved the exempt permit for Hibbing Archery Club to conduct a raffle at the Iron Terminals Events Center, April 6 and 7, 2024. These are the consent agenda items for approval today, looking for council action.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. There's no one scheduled to appear before the council today. The one appearance we have, we canceled her appearance. So this is another opportunity. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council, you're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, move to item seven, which is unfinished business. Item 7.1 is the clinic lease. Any further information with Essentia Health and discussions with respect to this matter? Brian or Britt?
Mayor, I can report back that I have continued to be in contact with Mr. Modich, who's the attorney for Essentia. They've requested a little bit of information. We're supplying that to them, so the conversations are continuing to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Item 7.2 is the property at 410 Fifth Street South is still on our unfinished business agenda. I know we've had some issues there. Is there any other information that you can disseminate to us with regarding this property? Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. And correct me if I misspeak, I do believe that there's been some blight notices that have been put out pursuing a couple of items of blight that exist there. And above and beyond that, at this point, I'm not sure that it would make a lot of sense to do a whole lot until we get a better evaluation of what's going on there.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions on the council with respect to this property? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, when, so how do we proceed now? The last, the last action with the permits halted the, or did it prevent us from taking the next step to actually access the property to inspect the work? So now that, if that has taken place, what do we need to do to move forward to actually go in and inspect from the very original, I guess, corrective actions that were, our code official had stated needed to take place?
Brian?
Mayor, so at this point, that original action has, is, is no longer moving forward. There was a permit that was obtained. The work related to that permit has kind of ended. My understanding at this point is that there is nobody currently occupying the main structure, and I don't believe there's anybody actually residing in that, that rear entrance. And so at this point, based on where we stand, what we've got is blight enforcement as it relates to the outside, and because nobody's habit, you know, taking up residence or, or living residing in that property, there's not really a good opportunity for us to get in and inspect unless and until a permit is acquired and some work is performed that needs to be inspected to, to be passed off or to be signed off on as a final completion, or until somebody moves in and takes up residence in that property.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So what would our proper, what would be the proper channel in which, say we have this happen again in the future? So there was a blight issuance that went in from our building code official that stated that these were necessary corrections that needed to be made. Does that mean whether it's habits, like whether if someone is residing there, or if it's vacant, then those don't need to be completed? I guess that's where I think we're splitting hairs, if that's what I'm understanding.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. And Counselor, if I understand your question, the question relates back to those original kind of health and safety. So the original health and safety items that were, that were identified within the property were related to hand railings, making sure proper plumbing was installed, and making sure that an entrance, an upper, a second-story entrance, it kind of opens to nothing, and to make sure that that was properly secured. So long as we don't have anybody residing in the property, there's not a good mechanism to go and enforce, I mean, if somebody wants to maintain their property in an uninhabitable condition on the interior, so long as it's safe and not creating a danger to the outside, and so long as they keep the structure secured, we can't necessarily force them to make changes unless and until they want to place somebody to reside in that property. And then we can make sure that the public health and safety is protected.
So in order for that landlord to actually do that, the city would be now issuing a rental license to that property owner, if I'm, so I just want to make sure that we catch this and that we, whatever we need to do to make sure that there is that corrective action, that the city, that our building code inspector can go in and, and inspect that, because that's still on the books of expectation. They cannot rent that lower level without having those, that corrective action corrected, fixed.
Mr. Lindsey?
Correct. And the, and the rental code is going to go a great distance in helping us to enforce those rights.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and, and the rental code owners will give us access to that for inspection purposes so we can finally get in there. Mr. Kingsley, who is the affected neighbor by this property? Mr. Kingsley?
So you're telling me that we just went through six months, we're literally back to square one, in fact, we're less than square one. Now you're telling me that you're not going to do anything because none of the dwelling is occupied? You're telling me that you think the dwelling is safe? I'm living next to a fire trap with raccoons and squirrels and doves living in it, and it's a public health hazard. The yard is a disaster. Six months ago, we had a court date to go in and get so that we can inspect that property. You dropped that because you said, well, now he's got a permit. He promises he's going to do the work. Guess what? He's promised that for 15 years. And so now you're telling me that I got to sit there and look at this dump because it's not occupied now? That's what you're telling me?
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you. No, not exactly. So I'm advising the city relative to what we can and can't do, or maybe what we should and shouldn't do. I'm not by any means giving you a, you legal advice onto what your remedies are. You have a private right of action against this neighbor. You can pursue him through civil litigation if you believe that you're, you're being wrong.
I would have done that years ago, had the city not stepped in and said that they were going to help me with this. In fact, you kind of took it over when you had the court date set six months ago. I was kind of told to lay back because you had, you had it covered, you were going to take care of it. And now you're telling me that I have to spend my money, get a private attorney, and handle this privately, after this many delays and broken promises? That's strong me.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kingsley, I'm not giving you advice on what to do. I'm saying that's an option. The, the city is limited as to what we can do, and we're pursuing the remedies that we can, and we're enforcing the blight ordinance, and we'll have the rental code ordinance as that gets going, moving forward. But at this point, our likelihood of success in doing something more without having somebody residing in that residence is not high with the, with the district court here.
That's just, that's so disappointing and unacceptable to me. I mean, you guys have screwed this up for 15 years, and now it's worse than it's ever been. I'm back to absolutely stage zero. And now you're telling me I have to spend, you're not telling me, you're suggesting that I spend my money and get an attorney and go after Mr. Toman. If I'm doing that, I'm going after you folks, because you're the ones who screwed this up for 15 years. What?
I'm sorry. Mr. Lindsey?
Come on up. If you, if you will, you don't, all right, thank you.
No, you know, and, and I get, part of the disappointment is now I'm questioning your loyalty here. You haven't really fully disclosed your connection here, Mr. Lindsey. And I didn't want to bring it up because I thought you were working for the city, but you, a year ago, lectured the council members on a conflict of interest, and if they had a conflict of interest, that they should recuse themselves from action. You have a conflict of interest on this, and I know it because it's in the St. Louis County records. You've represented the landlord on that very property. When you acted ignorant, like you didn't know a thing that was going on, you represented him. And so now I don't trust your motives one bit.
Well, Mr. Kingsley? I know.
Give me something.
Well, I, I'm just trying to stay within a professional quorum here.
Yes, so am I, but you're making it real difficult.
And I understand that. And, and what I'm saying is that I empathize with you. And all the other.
You know how many times I've heard that? That does nothing anymore.
I realize that, but I had to say it anyway, because I could tell you what I feel. Okay? And maybe, maybe it's, it's a moot point this time. January 1 of 2024, we're going to be able to get in that property and inspect it as part of the rental code ordinance. Don't need a court order to.
So do we have a plan for that?
We have an ordinance. Yeah, he has to register, we have to go in and inspect it. That's required. It can be required by the owners in which to do so.
I just want to make sure that there is a plan here.
Well, that's the purpose, Mr. Kingsley, of having this rental code ordinance, which should have been proffered a while ago, but we're here now. It's been passed by the council, it's been vetted out by our planning and zoning by legal council, so it's, we're moving forward, just like some of the other cities are, and we're going to enforce the rental code ordinance. It's a rental code property. It's an abandoned property, it's a vacant property, he has to pay the vacant building ordinance prop, and then after January 1, he's going to have to, it's going to be required to be inspected by our code official, and it will be inspected, and it must be registered. He has to pay a fee in which to do so.
And so when they find, you know, the blight, there's mold in there, there's animals living in there, you talk about handrails, there's no handrails, there's no exits from the building. I mean, I could give you a list of 100 things wrong with it. Then what? Do you find him and let it sit? Where's it going from there?
Well, the, what are the legal ramifications of that? Brian, I, I don't have the ordinance before me. If you could maybe help us out, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't have the ordinance directly in front of me, but essentially, he wouldn't be able to rent it out, he wouldn't be able to generate any revenue from it.
That does me nothing. He hasn't been able to for years. It's not rentable. The front building hasn't been rentable for probably seven or eight years. It's, there was a contractor that came in because he wanted heat put in there, and the contractor said this place should be burned down, it should be condemned.
And the code official will have the authority to go in there, inspect the property, and based on their recommendation, will, will take action. If they, if it's condemnable, they'll condemn it, they'll follow the condemnation procedures. Whatever, whatever is discovered in there, whatever action that the code official determines is, is legal for us to take, we're going to take that action after January 1.
All right, I, yeah, I don't know what to do. You do that, and we'll figure out what we're going to do from here, probably leave the city.
Okay, Mr. Kingsley, thank you. Any comments, questions from the council? Counselor Biondich?
I just have a question. This property, if he chooses not to rent it, he doesn't have to be inspected. Is that correct?
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Not in the same way that you would if you were actively renting it. I mean, he would have to register it as a vacant building, it would be, it would, it would stay on that list. But if he's electing to just pay the taxes on it and not create a revenue with it, there's not a whole lot, we, in order for us to be able to protect the health and safety, the public health and safety, we have to, we have to have reason to believe that somebody is exposed to that. And so it's, it's different with animal infestations where it's coming outside of the home, but based on the information that we've received from the inspectors that the city has sent down there, there's some health and safety issues that exist within the interior of the, of the property. But by and large, aside from the blight issues that have been addressed already, there's nothing on the exterior that really indicates health and safety of the public generally.
So I know when we, when we stopped at the process, when the building permit was attained, I thought, after that period of time, then we could resume and go back into an action mode. So is that, because the rental code ordinance, if he doesn't plan on renting it, why would he have, I mean, the inspection is a moot point. So I think that's what they're trying to get to, is at what point is that going to
If I may, so the rental code ordinance will give us the authority to go in there and make an inspection. If the inspection comes and, and the inspector indicates that it's not a habitable place, that it's a health and safety issue, and that it's structurally unsound, we can move forward with a condemnation process. But we'll have to know what's in there, and we have to get inside that house in which to accomplish that, and this ordinance will give us that avenue in which to pursue. Counselor Biondich?
So with this ordinance, is the city able to go in and do an inspection without the owner registering or signing up for that? I thought they had to sign up, pay the fee, and then get inspected. So are we able to do that without that process?
Mr. Lindsey?
In order for us to, to utilize the inspection portions of the rental code ordinance, he's got to register it as a rental, and he's got to give an indication that he's going to bring it online for that purpose.
And, and that's kind of my thought, is if, if he has no intentions of renting it because it hasn't been rented, I mean, it's not, he's not able to rent it, nothing is going to happen. Is that correct?
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. So if that's the case, what we can do is the city can continue to enforce the blight ordinance as it relates to the long grass, the weeds, the, I know the soffits are coming down, that was part of the, the blight action. There's some exposed wires on a light fixture, that's part of the blight action. But aside, as far as enforcing anything on the interior of the home, unless it becomes structurally unsound, or unless some of those additional things happen, there's not a great ability for the city to move forward. And when I say that, I, I can tell you, when the inspections originally occurred on that property during part of the, the original action that we were pursuing, basically, what the reports came back and said is, well, the, the structure, it's structurally sound, there's no, there's no concern that the structure is going to collapse or fall over or trap anybody inside of it. The, the primary indications for public health and safety were lack of hand railings, that the sinks, toilets, and plumbing fixtures weren't mounted, they were missing in some cases or disconnected in some cases, and then again, that there was a second-story entrance or exit that seemed to have had some sort of a deck or something outside of it previously that kind of opened into a false, a fall risk. And so those were primarily the, the items that we were pursuing. The reports didn't come back and indicate that it was a fire hazard, it didn't come back and indicate structural unsoundness, it didn't indicate any of those, what we typically think about as the condemnation-type events or, or conditions that exist with, with regard to property. Now, I mean, the city would always have the ability to pursue it as essentially an eminent domain, which is, you know, some, some, sometimes that's referred to as condemnation, but in today, in taking that action, the city would have to actually pay fair market value for the property to acquire it, and then we can do what we'd like with it. And when, when the council has looked at that in the past, the cost of proceeding that way becomes prohibitive. I think we're talking in the ballpark of potentially north, I don't remember the exact figure, of $100,000.
Just feel their frustration. They've been at this for 15 years, 15 years. So it's, it's very frustrating to know that we've come up with virtually nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. We have one minute, and then we have to recess the council meeting and begin the hearing for the levy. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So in reading the property and preservation, maintenance and preservation code, it does discuss regarding infestations, and I would like to revisit that portion of it in terms of infestations, if there are animals living up there. I know, I don't think the inspection covered the third floor at that point, and now I would say that that has, that's a change from the last two years. So if we could revisit an exploration of enforcing our, our own property and preservation maintenance code ordinance regarding infestation, and, and I was just going to pull up the language. And then the last thing I'd like to know, if this could be provided by staff to the council, has the property owner put the, put the property on the vacant building list since it has been vacant? I know the garage apartment was, was occupied, but the primary structure, primary residence was not. So I'd liked an update of how many years it's been on the vacant building list, and then what happens on year five? What is What is the action step, other than just fines and fees?
Condemnation is the same thing. And remember, in condemnation, you have to buy the property. You don't just get it. So what happens if we go to court for condemnation? They'll look at us and say, okay, Virginia, you can take it down. You may have to give them some money, but we've got to pay the abatement. We've got to pay the demolition. Put it on the property taxes, and if he doesn't pay, we're out that money. So it's basically us buying the property.
Okay, so I'd like to have more conversation, and I know we have to be done. But thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Council Paulson. So do I need a motion to recess? Okay, we're going to recess the city council meeting, and we'll resume it upon completion of our public hearing with respect to the levy. It is right at 6:01 PM. So we'll begin the tooth and taxation meeting tonight. So the Virginia, City of Virginia, Virginia City Council will hold this public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it's proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in 2024. And there's a packet here that's available. And so I'd like to preface this by what we're going to be doing and moving forward. We'll have some discussion about the proposed levy with the council, and then we'll certainly invite anybody that wants to come and ask any questions, any specific questions about how we arrived at that levy. We'll be happy in which to do so. So this is similar to the letter that was proffered at the September 30th, or at the meeting to set the levy on September 30th. And so I made some updated changes to that letter to make it a little more informative, and only for some of you who are here tonight, but those who are listening at home. So these are challenging times for the City of Virginia when it comes to setting a general fund budget for 2024. Now, there are other cities and towns experiencing some similar challenges. Our preliminary general levy was set at 21%, and by law was required to be submitted to the St. Louis County Auditor prior to September 30th of 2023. This percentage cannot be raised, but it can be reduced. It is common practice to set the preliminary a little bit higher until we determine what our revenue and expenses are between September 30th and the end of December, because there's some revenues and projections coming out we weren't aware of. So that's why we set it at 20% and work to reduce it and make through other budget adjustments, which we have done. As the elected body for the City of Virginia, we would like to provide some history and bring some clarity to the budget process. In the last 10 years, our general levy fund has fluctuated between 0 and 14%. For seven of these years, the levy was set below 5%. And based on revenue and based on expenses, historically, these raises did not, we did not raise enough revenue to cover all the expenditures. In the previous years, the deficits needed to be covered by fund transfers from our cash reserves or from the checking account or cash investments. This practice is no longer sustainable, and thus the reason for this meeting tonight and for the future decisions on the levy. To maintain and restore the integrity of the city's cash reserves and investments in the checking account, we intend to account for all these deficits in the general fund levy beginning in 2024. The levy will rise because of this accounting change. We will meet these goals and reduce the preliminary levy by identifying those departments that do not achieve a revenue stream, to cover costs, capture untapped revenue opportunities, increase fee structure citywide, consolidate services wherever possible, and implement an adjustment of personnel in non-emergency departments through attrition and a hiring moratorium, which we've done. This means that some city services may be reduced or eliminated, and financial obligations to partnership services may be discontinued or reduced. And we've done some of that as well. We'd like to clarify that the general fund levy does not equate to arising your personal or business property taxes at the same level of the levy percentage. Property taxes are a portion from levy set by the City of Virginia, which we're going to be discussing tonight, the county of St. Louis and Rockridge School District Number 2909, who set their final levy last night. The levy collected is based on the county auditor formula, which includes the total estimated market value of homes and businesses. St. Louis County has completed the assessment of all properties in Virginia this year. St. Louis County has now provided property values to the city. We will now have the final amounts that will affect your property taxes, and we'll give you some examples. Our final general fund levy for 2024 will be set as tonight's city council meeting. What's being presented to us and to you tonight, and we intend to set a final general fund levy, is currently being proffered at 5.22% or a dollar amount that we have to convey to the county and the state, that 5.22% equates to $276,357 increase over last year's levy. Your input has been very important, and we are grateful to all of you who have engaged in this budget process. You've helped us reach this goal of 5.22%. Thank you for those who asked all the hard questions and provided the valuable information, your suggestions, and how we can reduce the budget without compromising core service that we provide to the City of Virginia. So, like I said before, we said before, we love this city, just like you do. We're committed to it, just like you are. We want only what's best for our community, just like you do. We face these challenges together to provide needed services and help make the City of Virginia a better place to live and work. Those of us sitting at this table live in the City of Virginia, just like you all pay taxes in the City of Virginia. And we have to be cognizant of what your needs are and how this levy affects all of you. So right now, we're at 5.22%, and we're going to be talking about the general fund levy. So once again, the 5.22%, there's a lot of things that were cut, and there's some revenues that we've received. We're getting some additional monies through the state of Minnesota on our local government aid, which helps significantly. There's been a huge rise in our property liability insurance and our workers' compensation insurance to the tune of about $900,000 for 2024. That was a challenge. But we've taken all the revenue, taken a look at all the revenue that we have available that we can capture. We're making some changes to the fees that we're charging to, for example, through our solid waste. And I understand that solid waste is a enterprise fund. However, if there's a deficit in that price fund, that has to be covered by the general fund. So we make sure we accommodate for that. And we're also adding money into our general fund levy, $1.1 million, for the levy of the new public safety building, and that'll continue for a period of time in the levies to follow. But this 5.22% is, I think, a bare bones budget for the most part. We have a higher moratorium. There's a lot of things that are going to affect our employees, but at the same token, you know, we've heard what you've asked us to do. The emails and all the comments that we've received, all the councils have received in any form, we'd like to see that levy as low as we can. And the 5.22 would have been 5%, but we added back in the music in the park. Now, we've always had the music in the park, and we've always provided the venue for music in the park, but we're paying for the bands last year, and we'll be paying for the bands in the 2024, and we could look for some sponsorship to help alleviate that. Well, always, the music in the park was always going to be part of the services and the concert series that we provide. It's just that who's going to pay for the band? Well, we've heard the voices of many people who sent us emails in the last week. That's been added back into the budget, so 5.22%. And once again, it's an increase from 2002... I'll give you this. 2022, our budget was $5,887,000. 2023 was $5,296,583. And now we're asking to set the levy at 5.22%. At least that's what's proffered by staff, and that's what we're representing you for this evening, in the amount of $5,573,200, which is an increase of $276,357. That's where we're at right now. So, that being said, I'll go to the city council for any questions or comments, and then more than happy to have you come up one at a time. If you're a part of a group, I would like just one person to represent. So before we go to the public, I want some comments from the city council first. Any questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay? Please identify yourself for the record and welcome the council.
Greg Lindsay, homeowner in Virginia.
Okay, what can we do for you, Mr. Lindsay?
So I want to straighten things out about the general fund. No other city speaks about the general fund by itself. The only thing that matters to the taxpayers in this city is the overall levy at the end of the day that comes back on our tax statement. It's not 5.2, now it's 9.16. So it's a drastic change. I'll give you that credit, but it's still an outrageous number. And the problem is, the trend continues and never ends. So if you want the gold standard of public information for a truth and taxation statement, look at Hibbing. And I mean it, look at Hibbing. Anybody can go to their website and see how they conducted their truth and taxation statement. They had people come in and talk about how exactly these levies and their bond referendums affected their taxes. And nobody talked about the general levy. Nobody. It's all about the end of the day, the overall levy. That's all that we see. And that's what freaked out half these people that came here at the other meeting, is because it was 35.6%. That's what they see. It's not 5.1. The general levy means nothing.
It does mean something.
It may to you.
It means something.
When it comes to your taxes, the check that's going to get written out is what comes on at the end. So I agree, it may mean something to you guys, but when I write that check, it's not for 5.2%. Correct? Am I wrong?
You're writing a check for your proposed property taxes.
The overall levy is what we pay for on our taxes, and that includes our debt. So it's misleading to say that we passed a levy that was 5.2%. Well, yeah, maybe you did for the general fund.
Well, that's what we're talking about right now, the general fund levy.
But it doesn't matter. What I'm saying is, when the people at the end of the day that are paying this, they're not paying 5.2%. They're paying the whole debt, everything we owe, all the money. And to say that we were under-levered for decades is a misstatement.
It is not a misstatement.
It is a misstatement.
The general fund levy...
Anybody could go to the certified property tax levy, and this information comes from the Minnesota Department of Revenue Property Tax Statistics, and the title is Certified Property Tax Levies. And it goes back from 2008 to 2022. And if you put in different cities, which was, I put in Aurora, Virginia, Bowabik, Evlith, Hibbing, Buell, Gilbert, Ely, and Mount Iron. And the statement comes back that Virginia is the number-one levered city of all those cities for the past 15 years. No one surpassed us except Aurora just briefly last year. Mount Iron flatlined at 29% for 15 years. Congratulations to Mount Iron. Unbelievable. Flatlined at 29%. Ours have gone up 122%, and we're on the way to 200%. I want you to think about that. Everybody think about that. When this goes down and we pass a levy that comes across at 9.6, next year it's going to be another 9.6. So we didn't gain by chopping off 35.5% off the original proposed levy. It's just going to come back and bite us in 2025. So people need to know that. This is facts. And I'll tell you what the results of this are, the levy. Here's what the results are. Virginia is the highest taxed city in the state of Minnesota, and I'll back that up. So if you go to the League of Minnesota Cities, they also have all the information you need to know. They have a tax calculator, and in that tax calculator, you could plug in your home value and the number of people in the city. So as an example, I put in $150,000 homesteaded tax property value for a home with a city population of 2,500 to 25,000. And you know how many cities fall in that category? 188 cities fall in that category. And guess who's number one on the list? I don't even have to tell you. I'm going to just... This is all coming right out of the Minnesota League of Cities, and it comes off the revenue rolls for the state of Minnesota. So you could change property values, you could alter the population a little bit, and probably we're going to still come at number one. And this isn't a gold medal we should be wearing around our neck. This is an embarrassment. I mean, think about it. 15 years of tax levies to the max, and our surrounding cities are... Well, Hibbing was at 80%. 80% after 15 years. And Mount Iron, 29. And Ely was down there, too, right at the bottom. So they worked really hard, Ely did. They put snowplows on garbage trucks. They concentrated on every meeting on how we can save this money for the city, because we're a little town, and they have the most beautiful, brand-new homes, the best development. They have industrial stuff going on over there, and they're at 29%. So they have 500, $600,000 homes, and those people are paying $3,000 for a property tax. Yeah, it's quiet. I agree. I'll give everybody a little time to think of that and digest that. So I want to say another thing. I want to commend the women on this council. They sat here and were rock solid in their original numbers on that levy, all of them. And there was one standout in this whole crowd. I sat through every one of these city council meetings. Councilor Paulson drove this home. Every single meeting, she drilled down on those numbers to bring that levy down and relentless, and went home and worked on these numbers, I'm sure, and we all sat here and watched it. So, Councilor Paulson, job well done. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, you deserve it. Now I'm going to end on a happy note. Get the hell off this mess. Every taxpayer that disagrees with me, I'm going to make you happy tonight. So if you disagree with what I said anything tonight, I welcome you to go to City Hall tomorrow morning, and you walk up those stairs with your check in hand. If you're so compelled to say you're undertaxed, under-levered, and you got the money, and you feel compelled to pay more, Sherri Erickson, our financial director, will gladly take your check and deposit it in a general fund under donations and gifts. It'll go under the heading of revenue.
Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, my name is Kathy Katie, and I am a taxpayer, homeowner in Virginia. I'd like to thank you for your hard work on the city budget, and I would like to remind you of your fiduciary responsibilities for the taxpayers of Virginia. I've attended several meetings, and I also have emailed all of you at least twice. Mayor Cuffee responded. You said you couldn't lower the levy to 5% because it would make the city lose its health, safety, and security of our residents. I agree. I would like to know how the ITCMAC, golf course, and library contribute to our safety, health, and security of our citizens of Virginia. And I still think the levy should be set much lower, under 5%. And every time anyone brings up the comparisons of Virginia to Hibbing, it is shot down. I think it is a reasonable comparison, since they have twice as many people and half the number of employees. I would also like to correct one thing. Not everybody up here lives in the City of Virginia, and I think that's important to know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who'd like to come and speak, you're welcome to come forward. And please state your name for the record and welcome to the hearing.
I thank you, council and staff. My name is Crystal Royer. I am losing my voice, I apologize. Echoing what they have said, thank you for your hard work. This isn't easy. You guys have been doing it since the audit findings on August 15th. This is no longer a knee-jerk reaction. This is dollars coming out of our pocket to the point of where we're looking at properties out outside of Virginia. We just landed here three years ago. Our mortgage payment increased $350 a month due to escrow, and 85% of that was to the city of Virginia. With the cost of living, it isn't easy. As we talk about other cities, I just want to remind us that our local government aid increased by $800,000 above last year. Another thing that I was coming across is I'm gathering information from other cities and what they do and what's going well and what isn't. I think it would be really great if we added a commission, a budget commission or a finance commission for some oversight of the spending. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know what it means, but I have come across other municipalities that have that. It would give taxpayers, residents that live here, a voice and a say in how money is being spent. And as we talk about the budgeting, I don't know how local governments budget. I don't understand it. I know how my personal, you know, budget works. As we're looking at, for example, the ITMC, if we're projecting $350,000 for utilities in our year-to-date for payments is $408,000. Part of the reason that my family is looking elsewhere is I feel that we're going to be in the same pickle that we are this year with having higher taxes across the board. It's my understanding at the last committee of the whole meeting, the numbers are compared last year to this year. And so I'm not understanding how the numbers are adding up. That isn't the only example. The utilities for the golf course, the restaurant are very in the red mark in that place, along with concessions are budgeted at $50,000, and we've spent $86,000 year-to-date. I think that there should be a spending cap. It's my understanding, finance and admin have the authorization up to $10,000 to spend without... I don't know what sort of oversight happens with that. It wasn't very clear in the purchasing policy online. The city of Bowabik has a $1,000 cap on any purchase, and then it has to go to some sort of checks and balances. Echoing what Mr. Lency said, when the 21% proposed budget came out, the city of Virginia taxes for my personal portion were $2,321. My same home in Evlith, that total would have been $1,400, and in Mount Iron, $735. It's a huge difference. We fortunately have the ability to buckle down and move and get another job. However, my heart hurts for those on fixed incomes or the single moms and single dads, single parents that are just making it paycheck to paycheck. I thank you for your work. I thank you for what you do for the city, and thanks for always listening to us.
Thank you, Crystal. Anyone else who'd like to come and speak, you're welcome to come forward. Please come forward and state your name for the record and welcome to the public hearing on the truth and taxation.
I'm... I'm trying to get out of this, but some things have been bothering me. Hope this truth and taxation meeting... I hope this truth and taxation meeting isn't going to turn into another indictment of the St. Louis County assessment policies. I have a long write-up here that I'm going to forego if it's not going to happen, because I'm just going to state for the matter, St. Louis County assessors are public service. They work for the citizens of the state of Minnesota under the jurisdiction of the Department of Revenue, who gives them guidelines on parameters on how they set their levy, their Property taxes aren't ad valorem tax, which means based on market value. So their goal, if I remember right, is to... Every year, the state of Minnesota does what's called a sales to price ratio.
Ratio.
Ratio. And they look at that every year for every jurisdiction in the state of Minnesota. Can you imagine the work that has, that goes through that? We're talking... Wow. Thank God for IBM computers or whatever. Back in my day, I was, you know, feed the punch cards. I know it's different. But anyway, with that said, I'm thankful for what Mr. Lency said. So could you please tell me what your total levy is? No, I looked at a sheet here, and it's got your proposed general fund levy at 6409, debt service at 173, and tax abatement at 150. And the VITA levy belongs in that column also, because that's something we're taxed on, right? By the way, based on the VITA levy, I'm assuming that our net tax capacity went down this year? Anybody help me out why? What happened? There must be something spectral that happened. Looking for some guidance here from you folks.
Mr. Jorgensen, I don't know what sheet you're looking at right now, but what is your question? Why the market value went down?
We were sitting right here when I got here. That's the sheet I'm looking at, front page.
Okay, that's the 21% on the general operating fund. I believe the mayor said that we're looking at...
I'm asking you for a total of everything, ma'am. I don't care about percentages, I just want a total number. And that's what Hibbing gives you.
The total number is, currently we have $5,296,843 for operating fund in the general fund levy. We're proposing a $276,351 increase to the general fund operating levy, bringing that to $5,573,200. Then comes a special levy for VITA that's based on marketing value. The marketing value went down a little bit this year, and it's actually a year behind because when I asked for the county, they give it to me for 2023, they don't have the proposed for 2024. So that's $64,974. And Britt, you can talk about what we use that funds for. Okay, it's for the VITA. There's a VITA program which helps Main Street and local businesses.
By the way, I think they're doing a great job, just so you know, that money well spent.
Okay, and I want you to realize that that money is already in the budget, in the general fund of that $70,893 was this year's VITA. So that's already part of your taxes.
Right.
Okay?
Next year's is...
It's not above and beyond, it's actually lower.
Next year's is 64,974. So my question was, what happened? That tells me that there's a decrease, there's a decrease in your net tax capacity. Fairly drastic. So why, why, why...
Oh, Mr. Jorgensen?
Yeah.
Let me finish.
Okay.
It's based on market value.
Right.
The market value went down. You'll have to ask the county why. I got the number from the county.
Well, I have, I have one reason why it probably went down, is that our Blue Cross Blue Shield building in town, which I don't know what it was valued for, is no longer taxable entity. So that's raising everybody's taxes. Not that I'm complaining at all about the church getting that building, but I mean, I'm just searching for facts here. That's, that's an influence.
This would be not based, it would be based on last year's market value. They're a year behind. The county is a year behind.
Right. I'm talking next year's taxes here, 2024.
Right, I have to base it on what they give me, which was last year's.
Right.
And I don't think the school is... I don't think that's changed. I think they paid their taxes.
When did Blue Cross Blue Shield quit being a tax-paying entity in the state of Minnesota, or in Virginia?
I would have to check that with the county.
They have not yet.
Oh, so they're still... Okay. So that's going to be next year's taxes then? Okay. So I still haven't got the total number of everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Your special levy for P&amp;H tax abatement, that's over there, it used to be MindPro, Joy Global, Kamatsu. Okay, that's like a TIF district, it's a tax abatement. We actually asked for the $150,000 from their taxes. They pay their taxes. We, as a city, it's a special line item, asked for that amount from their taxes.
Yep.
So you really can't say everybody else is paying that. They're not. That's coming directly from Kamatsu. The Iron Trail Motors, that is over $1 million, that bond. And that's being paid by the... There's a zero there. Nobody looks at that and is thankful for that, that the sales tax is paying that.
I understand that.
There's debt levy, the street and alley 21A bond. Fix some of the many bad streets in here. That was an increase from what's already existing in your taxes of $161,910 was left for this year. It went up 68.9%. So $161,910, you have to take off that 273 for... That's not the increase, it's just above that debt you're already paying tax on. Does this make sense?
Yeah, I'm following you, but I'm just, all I need is the end number. What's the end number that you're taxing citizens of Virginia this year? The total.
It's going to be $7,795,284.
General fund levy, $6,409,180. Debt service, $1,733.178. And tax abatement of $150,000 proposed for 2024.
Yeah. And if you add the VITA levy in there, it's 8 million, whatever.
Correct, add the 64,974.
I just, I'm going to go on from Mr. Lency here a little bit. We're too big for our britches, folks. Lady was talking about, and he was talking about comparisons between two cities, different cities. Virginia, I'll defend the city in a way, as far as some of the smaller cities around here, because they don't have full-time fire, ambulance, AOS?
Hibbing.
Hibbing does. Hibbing does. And that's a valid comparison. We will never, ever compete on a per capita basis with the city of Hibbing, with a population of 20,000 and us sitting at 8,000. Somewhere, somebody has a study on what a realistic goal for that is. That would be, if that's not there, that would be a really good study to take, maybe the University of Minnesota or somebody. But those comparisons are valid, but we're too big for our britches. We need to, when you run a business, you have a break-even point you calculate. If you want to make 15% profit, your formula is fixed costs plus 15% of your variable expenses equals the number you want to profit by. If you set that at zero, what I'm getting at is here is your fixed expenses are your biggest detriment to setting budgets. And I'm pretty sure that wages, salaries, wages, benefits are our biggest fixed costs. Now, you alluded to the fact that we have a hiring freeze on. I've heard that term a lot over the many years before, during, and after I was on the council. And to my knowledge, it might have been a freeze, but it was never a reduction. And that's, we have two options. We either reduce the number of personnel we have in the city, or we combine with these other four cities, which should have been done 30 years ago. I moved here in 1971, my school embarrassed closed, moved here as a senior, and I love this town just as much as anybody, but I love this region. And it's about time. You need to consolidate or combine services under a position of strength instead of a position of weakness. And right now, we are in a position of weakness. I don't know how the other cities would feel about doing that, but there are certain things I know that they'd be open to talking about and combining things. We have to reduce those direct expenses. It's the Pareto Principle. Pareto Principle says, if you have a problem, focus on the most important, the primary reason. So it's not unrealistic for anybody to sit up here and ask the city to reduce personnel. I've always supported unions. I want jobs, but it becomes a matter of economics. And that's all it is. I mean, as far as us go. It's what we pay, our bang for the buck in regard to what the city's providing for us. And you're providing the same stuff, but the price keeps going up, and it's just not working. So if you're going to follow through on that statement of reducing, it sounded like you were making that, but I want to see actual things happen, not just words. If you're going to walk the walk or talk the talk, walk the talk, walk it. So I'm hoping that you're going to do that, because this is getting out of hand. It's, it's not good. Debt is a killer. Debt is a killer. And, I mean, anybody sitting in this room knows that if you have a high debt and you're paying money on just interest on the debt, in today's world especially, I'm happier than hell. I don't have much, because take a loan, oh, no. It's nuts. So I'm going to end there. I have a lot, I could more to say, but I think I've said more than I should sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Okay, anybody else like to come up and speak? Is there anybody before...
I'd like to make one brief comment.
One moment, please, thank you. Is there anybody else first? Okay, don't want, let's just, someone come first, and then, Mr. Lynch, you can come back.
I'd like to address all the city employees. Your job is directly connected to the financial well-being of this city. Every one of your jobs. And everybody sitting in this room is trying to help the financial well-being of this city. So we're trying to help you save the city, keep your jobs. That's all I got to say.
All right, sir, come on forward, please. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the hearing.
My name's Jacob Glazer. I'm a taxpayer in the city of Virginia here. Not a financial expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I do know that there is one simple thing that I can say is, when you set a budget at your kitchen table and you start looking around at what you have and what you got coming in versus what you have going out, if you have more going out than you have coming in, you got to make cuts. And essential services are not the place to make cuts. We don't need to make cuts in fire, we don't need to make cuts in public works, public safety, any of that. But there is an egregious amount of spending that is being done in culture and recreation. There is a budget on that library that is astronomical for the entire region, other than Duluth, that I know of. Bringing up Hibbing, once again, their budget for their library is half of ours. They're at $500,000, we're at $1 million. If, if you look at that, that's, that should, that should raise a red flag right there. You're looking to try and increase service on the debt that we have, make some cuts in non-essential services. I know times are hard, inflation's high, we need to do things to make cuts at our house. The city needs to do the same. There's no reason to... There's no reason to get city employees all worked up about their jobs and their benefits when there's meat on the bone for non-essential services to be cut. And in my humble opinion, that would be the place to do it, because it's not really affecting public safety, public works, roads and bridges, and it does end up saving jobs in the community. So as a whole, I wish that we could see what the percentage on the sheet is included with the debt levy that is on there. And I believe that's what a couple of the other gentlemen and people were saying, is what is the whole number percentage going to be when that debt levy is added on to that 5.2%, 5.2% from the general fund? So if that can be brought up or calculated quick, that would be a nice, for the public to know as well, because setting the general fund levy at 5.2, but then we have the debt levy on top of it, that's what we're going to be feeling in our pocketbooks. That's the check that we're going to be writing. The general fund is great, but we have to factor in the debt levy on top of that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I think I can add that for you. The debt levy is, debt service debt levy for 2024 is $1,733,718. General fund levy proposed for 24, $6,409,180. And the tax abatement of $150 in addition to the $64,974 in, for the VITA levy, so that's 8 million some dollars. We could get the exact figure for you there. Yes. Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the public hearing.
My name's Amanda Metz. I'm the labor representative for the AFSMI employees here in Virginia. I'm also a taxpayer and homeowner in the city. And it's not often that, you know, this is the only city that I live in. So I get to come and have the pleasure of representing these employees for the city. And they do the work that I get to enjoy as a resident, right? And we just had another citizen come up and say that we should not be cutting city employees, but that we should cut the library. And those are city employees. Those are AFSMI employees, those are union employees, and they provide vital services to the city. They are, you know, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of comparison about Hibbing and Virginia specifically as it relates to those libraries. I know there has been a little bit of a letter-writing campaign to the council on that matter. AFSMI also represents the city of Hibbing, and I can speak to that a little bit. The city of Hibbing actually has more employees than the city of Virginia in their library. One of the things that is a curiosity of their budget is that they do not count the custodial employees who work within the city within the library budget. They are counted within another general budget for custodial services. And so our library has to carry that load within their, you know, for their custodial maintenance employee within their budget. And so that's reflected in a different way. We also, it is true, have more full-time employees. In a library, it is very difficult to recruit anything but full-time employees. And there's been a lot of talk that these employees are overpaid, and that is denying the fact that two AFSMI employees and the director are both masters level, have a masters level education. These are not employees who are using that masters to make an inordinate amount of money. And none of that, you know, if you divide that amount for salaries out per the, over about 9.25 employees FTE that was counted in the 2022 library survey, we're not talking about an inordinate amount of money. One of the things that I noted with your latest budget packet that you handed out today, which includes numbers for both an eight, or 9.2% levy increase and a 5.22% levy increase, is that it's a little over $150,000 in difference. The library spends 8,000 more dollars on insurance benefits than the council does. And that total is about that. So you could easily cut another 4% if you cut your own benefits. And we're talking about comparisons between Virginia and Hibbing. Hibbing cut their council benefits. Hibbing no longer offers insurance to their counselors. And that is a huge budget savings, and nobody here will address that. We've had Councilor Motley suggesting that the VIBA contributions are too high for AFSMI employees, but we haven't talked about the council VIBA contributions.
I never said AFSMI, thank you.
You addressed very, specific departments, and those are AFSMI employees.
I would like it to be exact, and I never directed it at AFSMI. It was the whole employees.
Okay. And we, we talked about that specific two departments, and those are AFSMI represented departments, because they were not, so if we break that down, they're AFSMI employees. And so, yet, we've never talked about the VIBA contribution that you all receive, which is also significant. We never talked about the premium contributions that the city, you know, citizens pay on your behalf every year. And it's a significant amount. It's $150,000. We can cut another 4% just by cutting some fat up here. And yet, that has never been part of your discussions.
If I may just interrupt, it, it has been part of a discussion.
Excuse me?
And, and it has. And, and we did make a minor adjustment to the council compensation package by increasing the contribution from 9010 to 8020. But I'll say, from a personal perspective only, and I'm not speaking for the county, to the, to the council, I don't have a problem cutting it. I have no problem with that.
And I appreciate hearing that, because what we are really talking about here is cutting people's jobs.
We have, we have, we have discussed it. We did, in the budget, it's an 8020 instead of a 9010. Should it be more? Yes. Should it be limited? I don't have a problem with that. But that bodes well for additional conversation for 2024 as well.
Absolutely. And I, and I understand that that's not part of your conversation here today, I guess, is.
It's a valid point.
It's a valid point, and especially when we're talking about people's livelihoods. And that's all we're here to try to protect. And so there has been a lot of conversation about this, and about where we're spending too much money. You don't have a huge number of staff in your library compared to other libraries. You don't have a lot of, you know, outrageous spending within that library, nor do you have it within your other departments. And as part of this conversation, the only place that has not suffered a cut, except to that 8020 level, is the council and the other departments of the city that support the council directly. Under these budget proposals that you're looking at, from nine to five, every city department suffers a, a, a cut, except yours. And except the ones that serve you. And I think that every citizen here should know that.
If, if I may just clarify that a little bit, you know, whether they are bargaining unit employees, or whether they are non-bargaining unit employees, or whether they're at-will employees, the city offers a commensurate salary and benefit package. So what's good for one is good for all. So if our administration compared it to a bargaining unit salary, if, if, if you're getting, say for example, a 9010 and a VIBA contribution with your bargaining, you represent, the same should be a profit as well to the other city employees that work for us. Well, it should be fair for everybody, in my perspective, so.
And we're not arguing against that. I'm saying the council receives a benefit that no other council in the area does, and that if we're haggling over $150,000 to cut the budget, there's a clear amount, almost exact amount here in front of us, that nobody is talking about.
Well, I think, I, I think the word haggling is correct, in that the fact that we're not haggling over $150,000, we're haggling over a heck of a lot more than that, so. So, okay. All right. So, yeah, please, continue. Yeah, so, okay, thank you, Amanda. Okay, anybody else like to address the council? You're welcome to do so at this time. As long as you're maintaining a professional decorum, you're welcome to speak.
I'll try to tone my voice down. I'm getting old, I can't hear well anymore. That's my excuse. Okay. The library budget will pay the whole debt on the new fire hall. $1.1 million. So to say that the library is, you know, just squeaking by, I'm not buying that. It'll pay a $1.1 million bond for 40 years. The library budget. Think about it. There's another one. Let's bring that up during discussion, okay? Wow. 40 years we're tied into that bond, 40 years. And we're not going to see daylight out of that bond for possibly 20 years. It's going to affect everything we do financially in this city for a minimum of 20 years, until we can pull that tax out of the IMEC and apply it to that fire hall. So I'm saying, I'm sick and tired of talking about that fire hall. Let's build that fire hall. I'll put my boots and car hearts on tomorrow, start digging there. Let's build the damn fire hall. But the price is what's got me going. We need the fire hall, let's go for it. You know, we're in deep there right now. So that's not my issue anymore. My issue's, all along, was the cost. We could have cut that in half, easily, easily in half. And we still could. We still could, we just have to push for it. You know? You go to your developer, go to another developer, do whatever you want to do, I don't care who builds it. Demand a building for $15 million, or $12 million. Re-bid it. At the very least, rebid it.
We are doing some of that. We're doing some rebidding. We are. We're making a bunch of.
There's so much, I got so much to talk about here, I don't want to sit down, I'm getting really comfortable here now. Really comfortable.
You know, I realize that, Mr. Lency, and you make valid points.
But I want, I want you to listen to those points. It doesn't matter if we talk about it, but if there's no action done, we're going to spend 40 million bucks. We're going to be in debt, $90 million. Long-term debt of 90 million. In September, it was 58 million. We're slapping 40 million on top of that. $90 million. 4,000 people paying the bill. Not 8,000, 4,000. That's who writes the check as a property owners, taxpayers, not the total population. 4,000 people. $1 million, $100 million, we're going to be in debt. Very close to that. And I'll put that in perspective for you. I'm going back a couple of years. The first proposal to build Mintac, first edition, was $500 million. Our total debt's 100 million.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Jorgensen?
One of the things I forgot to comment on, or ask a question about earlier, was LGA increase this year of about a million dollars?
About $800,000.
Okay.
And that money is going to be used to pay the significant increase in the cost of our liability and workers' compensation insurance, which went up dramatically. That's where that money's going to pay.
I hope everybody realizes that, that LGA is at the whim of the legislature.
It is.
And when I came into the office in 2015, it was frozen at $4,400,000 for the city of Virginia, and it stayed there. And next election cycle, it can all go away. And watch out. Watch out. So I, you know, that's why things are coming to a big crunch here, and I, I hope that doesn't happen, but that's a threat to everything we're talking about here today. Thank you.
Thank you. So not just words, has to be action, right? And so we're going to try to take the action we can in order to accomplish this. But what action we take, if you cut the budget significantly, drastically, we can do that. We can cut, we can get rid of our, some of our core services, we can cut our, some of our staff in half, we can do all those kind of things, and reduce the levy to zero. We can do that. What comes with that is, you know, what level of services do the citizens want? So that's, the services are going to be adversely affected. If that's what the community wants, that's what they want, and that's what we'll provide. That's what we're elected to do. When we had that, all those public meetings on the public safety, we laid it all out there. This is what's going to cost, this is what the anticipated budget's going to be. Everybody had an opportunity, the citizens come to speak on that behalf. And it was overwhelming to support it. Now, if it's too much money now, and we're bidding, we've been in the project, you know, there's things that we can do. But giving back the money that we got from bonding from the legislature is not an option. So it has to be built, and I agree with you, Mr. Lency, that we have to build it. And we're trying to make some additional cuts in that regard, it can over-budget. In addition to that, we're making significant cuts to try to accomplish that goal and objective. And when you talked about consolidating services, moving back and forth, you don't think we've tried to do that over the last 10 years? We've met with these communities, they don't want to consolidate. Well, I'd like to consolidate our police, our fire, have a, have a fire tasking district, so the burden comes off the city of Virginia. I'd like to have a law enforcement entity, Quad Cities Law Enforcement Service, so we can minimize, lower the cost of providing law enforcement services. But, and we do have the authority under the state statute to levy a tax to all the communities which provide advanced life support services with the ambulance. It's already in state statute, we can do that. The only difference is, the only requirement is, is that it's taxation without representation. So if we want to tax Aurora, or Everth, or Gibber, or anybody else, we have to go to that entity, that city council or township, and get them to pass a resolution to allow the city of Virginia to levy a tax to their citizens. And we've made that proposal. Our former fire chief went on, had a mandate to do that. Nobody, no community would approve that. So it wasn't for the lack of trying, and it's not we're going to stop trying, we're going to treat it and find ways to consolidate our services. So the $1.1 million that we have in debt for the, for the public safety billing, it's the long-term investment we're making, in that when this tax, property tax, or this sales tax is, the projections on the sales tax, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the projections are that, we are, we're making, we're collecting more than we need to pay off the bond for the Iron Trail Moise Event Center. And we have that tax that was approved by the legislature for 20 years. If we pay it off in 14 years, which we could, depending upon, and as we collect more, and as we get more commercial economic development, which is forthcoming, that'll help lessen the burden of the property taxes of the residential, but also give us some more opportunities there. So we are going to make sure that we provide that service. And so by cutting these, by, by, by taking this prop, this sales tax, and asking the legislature, and reapply that to the public safety billing for the remainder of that 20 years, is, is a goal and objective we have, it's on the radar in which to do so. You know, we are looking to do those kind of things, to try to, to reduce the debt we have for that public safety billing over time. And so we'll continue to look for grant opportunities in that regard. Yeah, and somebody made some comment, or you can't live on grants, you can't live on hope and dreams. Well, that's true. But if there are grant opportunities available for a specific project, we couldn't get $9.5 million for roads and streets, legislature wouldn't give it to us. I've been down there, I don't know how many times, testifying on different things, local government aid, public safety billing. We have a DMS task force meeting tomorrow to look at consolidation of taxes, task force to consolidate service, and glean some additional money from the legislature for those communities that provide rural ambulance service, including ALS. There's a public hearing there tomorrow by the state. It's on the legislative radar. We'll be going down to testify for that, to try to get some additional money, help offset the cost of our public safety. The only alternative is to eliminate our ambulance and fire service, and go to volunteer. Ask Nashwauk what's happening with their ambulance service, they're having a tough time, and it's huge. And in 2020... I'm not saying that, but I'm saying in 2002, Minnesota Department of Health put together a study, that's thick, I have a copy in my office, rural ambulance service, it's critical, it's a critical service, that's in, and that's in jeopardy. Did the state do anything about it? No. So the reason I bring that up is because we are, we are looking for other ways in which to help fund this in the future. Right now, that's what the debt looks like, and that's the way it's going to be. So we have to make some changes, we have to make some cuts, we have to do those kind of things. And if, if, if that's, if the community wants us, if the community wants us to lay off personnel, cut our, our staff, it's going to be, you know, it's going to, it's going to directly affect services, and if that's the way it is, that's the way it's going to be. But we are, have debt service. All cities do. We have a lot of debt service. So I'm speaking for myself. I came back here from, we live in Minneapolis, and my taxes were astronomical. And my, and so, I mean, so I come here and I build a house in Virginia, come back to my hometown, born and raised to live here, and to pay this. And I don't mind paying... And I don't mind paying for ALS service because I've, when in my previous job, answering calls for service as a law enforcement officer, when there's an ambulance that provides ALS service can get to your house in four minutes and save your life or save your family's life, I think it's a service that we should be investing in. We shouldn't eliminate that service. No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying, no, no, what I'm saying is, when you provide this service, it's part of our debt service. So that stays intact, and I agree with you, Mr. Lencie. Nobody says that. But we're leaving it in there. That's a debt. That's a million dollars a year debt.
Kathy Katie?
Yes.
Once again, I agree, nobody's talking about getting rid of our ambulance, fire, or police, and I think that's very clear. People have made lots of suggestions on how to, how to cut the city budget. I think you've heard them all. I wish you would act on them. For example, ICMEC, yes, the tax, the 1% tax is paying for the building, but what about everything else? And maybe that needs to be turned into, what, just the hockey center? And get rid of the convention center, since it's not making any money, it's draining our budget. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you to everybody who's spoken already today. Anybody else like to come up? You're welcome to, to do so. Anybody? Okay, so, we have to make a decision on the general fund levy. Recommendation by staff, it's to set our general fund budget at an increase of $276,357, and our total debt levy is? Sherry?
Sorry. What was that, sir? Your total fund, total debt levy?
Yes.
Let me have that again.
And the general fund levy is $6,409,180, and tax abatement of $150,000 and $64,974 for the Vida levy, correct? I'm sorry?
General fund that we were proposing is $5,573,200.
Okay, yeah, thank you. This is an old sheet, yep. Yes, yes, thank you. Yep. Okay, thank you. Okay, before we act, any other questions or comments? Please come forward. Thank you. And the resolution has been emailed to all the counselors with the, so the, the, the resolution says, the resolution setting the final tax levy for 2023 payable in 2024 is as follows. General fund levy, $5,573,200. Special levy for Vida Economic Development, $64,974. Special levy tax abatement for Kamatsu, $150,000. Debt levy on the bond 228 Street and Alley Projects Moving Forward in 2024, $273,392. And the bonded indebtedness of $1,733,718 for a total levy for 2024, $7,795,284. Sir, please state your name for the record and welcome to the hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Joe Walls, question, and really simple one. Is this the total or is this the total that's being added to what's already in effect? And I'm sorry if that's not a...
Total.
That's, that is the total.
That is, that is the total.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. Hey, thank you. Anybody else like to speak at the council on this hearing today? Well, we'll thank everybody for your passion and for your direction as we move forward. Right now, there's a resolution on the floor to set the total levy at $7,795,284. Oh, that's right. Okay, we can't, we can't take a motion until we go back to the regular meeting, I apologize. So that's what we're going to, that's what we plan on setting for the resolution to approve at the council meeting, that where we will resume immediately following this hearing. So does anyone else like to speak before we adjourn the tooth and taxation hearing for Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if we will have an opportunity to have further discussion at the council meeting, so when somebody makes a motion with a number and you ask for further discussion, will we be able to further discuss?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, anybody can, yeah, we'll open it up for everybody. Okay, before we adjourn, state your name for the record, please.
Michelle Messich, I'm a taxpayer and homeowner in Virginia. I've gone to several meetings, and all I can do right now is urge you, Mayor, and the council to reduce the levy even further. I am now a retiree, I have a fixed income. I don't want to be forced out of my home, and at the rate this is going, I will not be able to stay in Virginia much longer. There's also many citizens that are still paying for the steam heat conversion, that they've had to pay, you know, gather loans, they're still paying it off. And this was a hardship to many, many people, especially our seniors and those of us on tight incomes. So nobody wants to see a layoff. I've gone through several myself, three in the mines, several in the Twin Cities. I'm living proof, you can survive. It's not fun, it's not tough, I mean, it is tough, but you can survive. And if that's what we have to do to get the levy down, then so be it. I don't want to see anybody laid off, but you can't, the citizens of Virginia can't continue paying these taxes. You're taxing us right out of the town. And I moved back here 12 years, back to my hometown, I would like to remain living here, but at this point, it's not going to be much longer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Messich. Okay, anybody else before we adjourn? Thank you. Please come forward and state your name for the record and welcome to the hearing.
I was going to say quite a bit of what she said. Every year, my market value has gone up, but this year went up $48,000, which increased my taxes by an additional $1,300. And that's what I'm, and I'm on a fixed income. And not only that, but I've become disabled and I end up having to pay people to do everything for me. And I, I hope that you really do something to reduce this, because otherwise, I'm going to have to leave too.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, we have a...
Jason, Jason Westby, I'm a renter here now in Virginia.
Mm-hmm. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having an open meeting and everything like that. It helps, actually, but it only helps if stuff gets done, because when you talk, 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 and nothing gets done, people get, they get angry. Outside of that, you mentioned a levy from other, other cities or other towns. What was that for? Like, if you could raise it, you'd have to go through their entity in order to raise it?
For the, that is for the ambulance service, for providing advanced life support ambulance. If, if we provide, which we do, we have a 640 square mile ambulance license, so we service ALS service for all the communities. The statute allows us to levy a tax on those communities that we serve ALS ambulance service to, but it's, we have to have approval or from that particular governmental agency to allow us to levy a tax, whether it's whatever that amount would be.
So do you normally, do they normally allow you to levy a tax higher than what you're doing?
No.
Then do you discontinue the services?
Well, that's, that's a possibility, you could discontinue your service, but that affects your ambulance license and your ISO ratings.
Well, I ask because when you're here and you're talking about having to make cuts, you tell everybody here that, well, if you don't want departments for this and you don't want departments for that, the city's going to have to suffer for it, the people are going to have to suffer for it, but you're not cutting anything else for those people when they're not giving you money. But you're going to raise taxes on us, and it's got to be considered that, hey, this is the way it has to go, and there's nothing we can do. $7 million is not cheap. I got 20 years of work left. That's not even going to be paid off by the time I'm done working, and that's if I'm able to stay inside this town. And even those that are on fixed incomes that are literally telling you, look, you're going to tax us right out of our homes. It's, it's in essence, you kill a golden goose, and you've only got 4,000 people working. You know, you get tired of that. So in essence, you already know, I do believe, most of you already know where cuts could be made, you just don't want to make them. And I don't mean to be rude that way, because I have to sit at my table, like this guy was saying, I have to make cuts. I have to make decisions that, okay, I can't do this or I can't do that. You know, a person can't even take a vacation, you know, I'm 43. I've done two vacations in my life, two, after raising four kids, and I'm not done yet, and I'm not crying about it. But that's just the way it is. So I mean, I think you need to look at yourselves before you start threatening us and telling us that we're going to lose departments, when you're not even cutting it for anybody else outside of it, when you could raise their levies. But they won't let you. Well, we're telling you, we don't want you to raise ours, but you're going to. I'm just, just saying.
Right, and, and we, this is for, just for the advanced life support ambulance service. If we, if we could levy the tax, we would, and that's what this EMS task force is for. I'm not saying that, you know, it's not an excuse of why we're not doing cuts here or there, but this is one of the areas that we're going to need some help once we do so. Otherwise, the service that we provide may not be sustainable.
That's, that's always the end game right there. And it's always us that get threatened with that, as it were. I know you're not specifically sitting there threatening us, but the end game is we're the ones that either, well, you're going to pay or you're going to lose. And when it comes to paying for other people's stuff, we're already losing. When you got, we're paying for social security, not social security, you're paying for programs that the county wants, they're taxing us crazy on that. You're paying for any other, any other program, whether it be through the libraries or the schools or anything else that we have to pay for, which in essence, people do need it in some instances. But we're, we're already paying, and it's, and we can't keep up with raising and people getting raises and people paying or getting medical and things like that out of our back pocket when we're struggling just to keep ours. And I know you don't want to be cutting jobs, because I work for a township, and I'm represented by Amanda. I mean, I, you don't want to just sit and start cutting union jobs when, when that's what brought in a lot of great opportunities for everybody up on the Iron Range, but, you know, when you do lose a job, it's not the end of the world, depending on what you're saving or what your cut and your end result is for, as opposed to just taxing everybody out of your own city. That work, that's all.
Okay, well, just, if I may just may clarify about the ambulance service, because I probably maybe did clear in my presentation, is that when our ambulance service goes out, we get reimbursed in three ways. Private insurance, private pay, and Medicare. And so when we go on the ALS service, we can charge so much per ambulance run, we get reimbursed for those ambulance runs. And so when we don't get reimbursed enough, that's the gap that we have to fill, and that, and we're, we are paying for that gap. Your citizens here are paying for whatever that gap is. So by changing the response model, moving, you know, moving personnel around, having full-time here, part-time here, that, so for the first time, I think, in a long time, the ambulance service is in the black this year. So that's helpful, but not sustainable. So the model that we have can't be sustainable over time, and yes, we're going to have to make some hard decisions.
I'm not, I'm not being reimbursed for anything, and neither is anybody here, and that's not sustainable.
That's true.
The same. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
Yep. Okay, just before we adjourn the hearing, there is a formula, and we can send it to you by calling our city clerk. It tells you what the proposed rate increase for the general fund levy at 5.22%, and then you could, and you could, you could move it around, you can move it to 0, 3%, 8%, whatever is the show, what your taxes would be. The city of Virginia portion of your taxes is going to be for 2024, and just as an example. The increased tax annually on a home that's estimated value of $75,000 less the market value adjustment, is annual increase of $42.67 based on 5.22. $100,000, it's $68.05 increase. At $150,000, it's $119.73 annual increase. At $200,000 home, it's $171.42 annual increase. At $250,000, it's $223.10 annual increase. And at $300,000, it's a $274.78 annual increase based on the general fund levy increase. So just, and there's a calculator in there, if you want that calculator to take a look at it, we'll certainly be happy to send that to you. And you can call our city clerk's office, and I'll give the number, and then we'll give it later. It's 218-749-3579. That's 218-749-3579. We'll be, we'll send this to you electronically or provide it for you, Sophie, like that.
Those numbers aren't the numbers we get taxed on.
I'm not...
Those are not the numbers that come on our tax statement.
Mr. Lencie, I'm just showing you what this...
You're misleading everyone. It's not correct. The numbers we get on our tax statement are that if we stayed at 5.2, it would be 9.16.
That formula, that formula came from the county, and it has it in there.
You're talking about the general fund again.
Yes, but that also has that in there, because I'll show you on the spreadsheet after this meeting where you can find that percentage that it calculates to with the debt levy. It's on there.
Why can't we talk about it?
We did, that's, that's exactly what they calculate to. That's what they calculate to, Mr. Lencie, what Mr. Cuffey just said, is the calculation.
Okay, Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that a possibility that we could, I don't know, Brett, you're probably, you're not prepared. Is that a possibility? We could put that spreadsheet on the screen? Or we're not ready for that? We're not ready for that? Okay. I don't know if that could be printed out, just so, at the 5.22%. And I just want to make a clarification. So on that, on that county sheet that we were given, so they do put in the column that we can adjust ourselves for whatever the general fund levy percentage is. Now, when I looked, I think, what was it, at 16.8, the debt levy? So let's talk about the debt levy percentage. Was that at 16.8% approximately?
Approximately.
Okay. So then when you add those two together, that's your total, total levy, taxable levy. Then what's something that's called a fiscal disparity? So Hennepin, Anoka, Ramsey counties, they put in, because they have much higher commercial properties, so they put some monies into a pot that goes to throughout greater Minnesota, the Taconite region is one of those regions. So the fiscal disparities pot, we get a portion of that. Now, I don't know what that formula is for Virginia, but the gentleman from the county that sent us the Excel spreadsheet, that fiscal disparity formula is in there. So even with the debt levy at 16.8%, if we stayed at 5.22%, minus the fiscal disparity, your overall taxation, like you had stated, would be like 9.16 or 9.18. But what you're trying to understand is, it's all one, it's all one piece, it's all one grouping. And the only thing different, I think, about 2024, on the debt side, on the debt levy side, is the $1.1 million bond payment for the public safety billing, which is a huge hit. But then once we do that, that's automatically included, but it's not going to help anybody that's on a fixed income or trying to figure out things. that's on a fixed income or trying to figure out things going forward with your, with your own budget needs, with our own family's budget needs. On top of that, when the estimated market values increase, like the county comes in and does the assessing, the city doesn't have control over that. So then that's another whammy on top of the steam conversion, on top of us voting yes for the school. So we've, we've really been hit. So I, I totally understand and I, I don't know, Mayor, if this isn't, not the right time to talk.
Yes, you talk, uh, yeah, that's fine. Whatever you need to do.
Just to address on that sales book, our EMV on the sales book went up, I think, 420, 25 million or 423 million in 2023. So we will see that for 20, if they're a year behind, I would assume that we'll see that for 20, 24, from 23 in 24 to budget for 25. Did I say that right? Okay. Um, so, so I had done a, just a spreadsheet. So I'd gone on and I, I don't want to segue, but I just-
Yeah, please do.
I want to talk about this a little bit if I may, Mayor. So we have a couple of accounts and, um, I focused on how we could do reductions without doing staff reductions. So one of the accounts is account 209 and it's listed under miscellaneous supplies. Then I went through each, whether it's the council, the mayor, uh, public works, park and rec. Um, so I wanted to know like what is, what is, what is miscellaneous supplies? And then, so that's account 209. Then we have account 319, which is other professional services. Again, I did that throughout the, all the departments. So, and some of those are not general fund departments. So I, I didn't, I didn't minus it out, but, but Britt did that, um, after the fact. Um, and then we have account 439, which is miscellaneous. And I went through all departments. Now, when I added all of those, so miscellaneous supplies, account 209, other professional services, account 319, and miscellaneous, and just a general miscellaneous, 439, uh, that's the account number. And I think there might've been a couple other small, um, like break room supplies numbers in there. When I added all that up across the board, that's $403,000, $403,383 in other professional services and miscellaneous supplies and miscellaneous spending. So in my opinion, I, we've talked about tightening that up and we need to understand where the, I mean, I'm sure it's a nut and a bolt and it, it goes to something, but if it goes to something, then it needs to be coded to, um, small, small, um, what is it? Small equipment repair or maintenance or what have you. So I was looking very closely at the spending and I do, I still want to address something. When we have a $12,000, but we're budgeting according to this budget now and what we're going to be approving, the library is, oh, we're okaying the library to have a $12,000 miscellaneous supply budget. Can someone explain why that didn't get cut? No, it didn't. It's in the budget packet, it was not cut.
Yep. If you're looking at the Casell spreadsheets, those were not updated. Page six would have the most recent cuts.
But why was it cut? Why wasn't it cut down to like, like the park and rec is like zero?
They, because they do have subscriptions, they have to pay that come out of those professional services.
Professional services is one thing. I'm talking about miscellaneous supplies. Why, and the police department has $15,000 in that allocation for miscellaneous supplies. I'm just really concerned about what, but when, when I looked at the park and rec, I think that was actually taken out of there.
That's what got put back in. That's the music in the park. It got taken out and then we got-
No, no, that was an additional line item. The prof, the, um, miscellaneous supplies, 209. I'm talking specifically about account 209. So when I looked at that and I looked at after we, and I really appreciate after we had a wonderful conversation, the cuts that you, you made, I just look at that account 209 and I don't understand why those, um, departments have to have that much of a cushion for miscellaneous supply spending. To me, that's very concerning and it, if you're talking about trimming fat and not employees, and that's what seems to be the focus, like nobody wants to do any cutting with employees, that's, that would be a horrible thing to have to do, but if it has to be done, it has to be done. But when I look at cutting the fat and I add up all those columns to $403,000, I, I kind of have to say to myself, where can we squeeze another? If we even got down to 3%, we'd have to, uh, we'd have to find, shave off another $117,452. So in my opinion, you've got to look at what are these, like, can't we just tighten up for one year? I mean, do we need to budget for, I know the light fixtures under streets, I think they're 15 to $18,000 a gl, per globe, but do we need, I mean, do we have two globes in stock if a globe goes out in 2024? Can we afford to just hold off on that, keep that in abeyance until the following year? Not putting it off and not passing the tax forward. Um, but there will be some other growth things that are going to be happening in 2024 and our estimated market value will probably change, um, based on that 430-some million-dollar number. And I'm not, I'm not asking any consideration to go lower. I'm just saying, when I pull those out and I see, um, streets under 209 had a miscellaneous supply of $30,000 and now that was cut. Then streets under account 319, under other professional services is, we're asking to be, to increase $25,000. I don't understand what that increase is for.
Mayor.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sherry.
But, um, the streets for the 25,000, your direct question that you're asking now is the Northwest asphalting that costs money?
So it's asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
And shouldn't, and, and wouldn't that be part of a project cost? And why would that be as a professional service?
We agreed to work with the county to go under their contract for, for crack ceiling and salt and those other kinds of things. So that's, that is-
Okay. So I mean, there's line items and I don't, I'm not trying to peck anything out. I mean, I know you've, you've worked so hard and we've all put a lot of work into this, but when I see these miscellaneous columns, it super bothers me. Like at the police department, it's a $15,000 miscellaneous supply column. Why is that? Why can't they, why can't the departments code this? I don't know who's in charge of coding, but it would make more sense than if I could see, hey, this is for this or this is for, you know, a headlight on a, on a police vehicle or, you know, um, a siren on an ambulance or what have you. So when you're, when they're putting that, those are huge numbers and I just look, I would, I would just slash them in half. That's what I would do. But I, I can't, I can't even suggest doing that because I don't know what they're being, what they're being spent on. But that is a huge concern to me, this miscellaneous spending. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sherry, do you have something else?
Um, yes. I just want to let you know that Friday I did spend going through each one of these and going through the detailed ledger on it. Very time consuming and where there was no changes, it either was a pure Mar security or there was, um, fees for our WEX Viva, different things like that, that, that's where they were coming out of. Now, does that mean it's coded right? No. The department head is to code it and I have a new accounting person down there, actually two new accounting people. And so I did spend a lot of time Friday saying, you know, we got to take it out of this miscellaneous supplies. You're only legally needing one supply account, which is 439. And, uh, so we're working with our auditor to see if we can change the title and just put supplies instead of, um, you know, so it gets coded to the right area. But either way, if you take out 15,000 here, it's going to go 15,000 in small tools and equipment because they needed it at the time. And that was my concern. I mean, I can slash and burn, but then we'll slash and burn.
And I get that, Sherry, and I truly appreciate you. I know that took a lot of time and I really do appreciate that. It's just when you look at, when, like if a taxpayer wanted to go and come and look and it's all of a sudden you're, you're looking at $15,000 in miscellaneous spending, you start to question, well, what are they spending that on?
Well, totally agree. I totally agree. I don't like that miscellaneous supplies.
Like when my kids do that, I'm like, no, 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 no Venmo. We don't do Venmo. But, so I guess my point is in order for me to understand, I would, I really want those. And supplies is too generic too, I think. I think you need to kind of drill down a lot more on that.
And so we have to work with the auditor to make sure it's within the state, um, accounting system.
And I didn't mean to go off, Mayor. I apologize, but to answer some questions, whatever we vote on, the number tonight will be added to the debt levy minus the fiscal disparity will be the total amount of taxation on property owners. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. That's what we discussed the last week and, uh, those cuts were made in that meeting that we had. I think more clarity is needed with respect to the miscellaneous supplies. Sherry, you're working on that? We need to know, the public needs to know. Any, if they have a question, they need to be able to just look it up and there it is. So clarity is important. Okay. Anybody else, any other council have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn, uh, the meeting? Anybody else from the public would like to come and speak, you're welcome to do so. Counselor Motley?
So when we received our property taxes, the proposed, it was around, don't quote me on exact number, it was around 36%, give or take, whatever. So right now, roughly, if we were to set the levy at where the city's at right now, you're looking at a little over 9%. So regardless of where this council votes at the city council meeting, it, I know it's not going to make people happy and I don't know if this number is going to be the final number or not, but it has gone down about a four, where it's down to a quarter. Is that right, Sherry? Roughly, I mean, I know we're about a quarter of what it was. So, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Motley. Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Biondich?
Will chime in. Um, having gone through this process in this in-depth, um, has been eye-opening. Um, no matter what we do tonight, I don't think it's something that we can just let lay. We need to be working on this all the time, all year to see where we can, um, hold things in. So I appreciate so much, all of you coming in. You are the people who put us here. This is our job. Um, and I appreciate everything that you've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sherry? Um, or we'll make a, a decision tonight at the council meeting, but I'd, I'd like you to take a look at, uh, I want to know exactly how much money we will save if the city council's compensation package with respect to healthcare is completely eliminated. So let me know how much that is. You have that approximate number now?
If you can give me about five minutes, I will get it for you.
All right. Thank you.
If you guys are going to take a cut, the city employees are going to have to take a cut in their healthcare benefits. Not you. I'm not going to single out one single person. You're going to carry the load. We're all going to carry the load.
Would you get that number for me, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Motley.
I think I make, Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, what do I make, 300 and some dollars a month?
Yeah, your salary is 300 a month.
So, we're not breaking the taxpayers' bank. The city has a spending problem. I did not get on this council to get city insurance. It was provided. I took the cheapest of the three to the taxpayer. And guess what? It's better than any healthcare insurance I've had through Essentia Health or St. Luke's with the best package from both providers. And I took the cheapest. So, you know, we're trying. There are some on this council that feel there is a spending problem and I'm one of them. So I'm trying. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Healthcare insurance for city, uh, for the city council will save, if it was completely limited, will save the city $147,484. There you have it. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so by the council moving into the 80/20 position, so the city would pay 80% of the premium, the, uh, councillor would pay 20%, councillor and mayor. Could we figure out the total if the entire AFSCME union moved into an 80/20 split? How many AFSCME employees are there?
I think, I, I think we have to caution, I think we're in a negotiation aspect of here. Uh, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, we should be careful about moving toward those kinds of discussions here just because we have a, and a negotiating session that's opening up.
Okay. Very good. Um, just letting you know that that would be a cost savings as well, probably a, almost $300,000 cost savings. I already know the answer to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion before we adjourn to the, uh, resume the council meeting?
I'll just make a comment.
Yes, please, Counselor Freely.
I thank Sherry for the homework she's done, Britt, Greg, Dennis, everybody that put their minds into this, the suggestions that have been made for solutions that we can come up with, reductions that need to be made. That's going to be a continuing conversation until we get to where we need to. Um, but I also want you to recognize the fact that any decisions that are made, which are difficult decisions, affect me, a retiree on a fixed income as well. So it's double tough for me to do that because I'm doing it not, and I've heard that tonight. You're doing that to us. We're doing nothing to you. We're doing what needs to be done and I'm affected as equally as you are with these decisions that have to be made, just so you understand that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Freely. Okay. One more time, anybody else that'd like to speak before we adjourn, uh, the hearing? Okay. Seeing none, we adjourn this hearing, uh, of Truth and Taxation at 7:40 PM. We stand adjourned and we immediately resume our city council meeting. Let's, uh, have a seat, everybody, please. It will resume the council meeting. We'll resume the city council meeting now. Thank you. Move to item number eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is approved the memorandum of understanding with AFSCME. Is this related to the sick and, uh, sick and safe?
That is correct. They're in sick and safe time. That goes into effect January 1st.
Safe time, yep. Okay. Thank you. I will move the memorandum of understanding. Move by Counselor Johnson to approve. Is there support?
Support.
Uh, by Counselor, uh, Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries under 8.2, approve the following 2022 tobacco licenses. Item 8.2A, Edwards Oil Incorporated, do his business as Lucky Seven Northside. 8.2B, Edwards Oil, doing business as Lucky Seven Hoover Road. 8.2C, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 8.2D, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods. Item 8.2E, Renda Incorporated, doing business as Rocket Liquor. 8.2F, DG Retail LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 13970. Item 8.2G, C and B Warehouse, distributing, doing business as Virginia Shortstop. 8.2H, C and B Warehouse, distributing, doing business at Virginia Shortstop Express. 8.2I, Super One Liquor LLC, doing business as Super One Liquor. Item 8.2J, Holiday Station Stores, doing business as Holiday Station, number 2746148. Item 8.2K, Holiday Station Stores LLC, doing business at Circle K, station number 2746041. Item 8.2K, Holiday Station Stores LLC, doing business Circle K, station number 2746041. Item 8.2L, the Virginia Smoke Shop, doing business as The Smoke Shop. 8.2M, Mike Waroz, doing business as a super smoke shop in Virginia. And item 8.2N, Dennis Yorzak, doing business as The New Zet. These are the items for the tobacco purposes, looking for council action for approved. Moved by Councilor Johnson for approval, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. 8.3, approve the 2024 second-hand goods license for the following. 8.3A, Anthony Eltebelly, doing business as Power Play Sports. Item 8.3B, Priscilla Treisman, doing business as Jackie's Attic Thrift Shop. 8.3C, Rachel Strasser, doing business as Rachel's Thrift Shop. Item 8.3D, Willie Spels, doing business as Twice As Nice. Looking for a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson, is there support? By Councilor Freely, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve the 2024 solid waste haulers license for waste management.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6, approve the 2024 massage license for the following. 8.6A, Susan Santi, doing business as Ah Massage. Item 8.6B, Annie Mo, doing business as Heinta H&amp;H. And item 8.6C, Tara Tricano Reinerson, doing business as Bear Rhythms at the Blue A Salon and Spa LLC.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson and supported by Councilor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, approve the 2024 kennel license for Angela Nians, doing business at Shaggy's. Moved by Councilor Freely for approval, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, I'm sorry, excuse me, 8.8, approve the 2024 pawnbroker's license for Thomas Anderson, doing business as North Star Pawn and Gun.
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Motley, is there support? By Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.9, appoint Crystal Royer to the charter commission for a four-year term ending four years after the appointment.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Motley, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.10, adopt a resolution for the issuance, sale, and delivery of temporary GO charter notes series 2023B.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.11, approve the updated memorandum of understanding with Minnesota TF2 for technical rescue response. Moved to approve by Councilor Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.12, discuss, approve the planning grants for the stormwater and wastewater resilience planning. And could you give us a little synopsis of that, Britt?
We actually have Matt Reader, City Engineer of Record, who's been patiently waiting, sitting here in the audience, to talk about this.
Well, thanks for waiting, Matt. I know it's been a long evening for you, and welcome, and could you give us some info on this?
No problem. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm, you guys were rolling, I almost hated to come up here and kill the momentum. You guys were rolling through that agenda, but I will try to keep this brief, but give you enough information to put this into context. So as you well know, over the last several years, we've been working capital improvement planning, roads, sewer, water, all those things, and trying to come up with, how can the city get the most bang for your buck? Obviously, there's infrastructure needs, we've identified those, roads, as I said, all the utilities. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a real good handle, working with Public Works, on trying to find what are the most, or what are the highest priority areas, right? What are we going to spend money and get the most bang for our buck on these projects? We've been pretty successful so far, just from experience that we've had through the Public Works staff and others, working together to come up with the projects that we're currently undertaking. The city recently invested in, which by the way, if anybody wants to stop by our office, or even I could do it at a meeting, come by and take a look at the GIS that's done now, that's going to be really helpful for the city moving forward. But by all means, stop by the office someday, I'd be happy to call it up and show it to you. Invested in that. The city applied for a grant and was successful in, on the sanitary sewer side, in getting some infiltration and inflow monitoring going on throughout the city to try to pin down where maybe are the highest areas of infiltration and inflow, which is taking away capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, and you're treating water, and I'm not going to use that phrase that I used before, Mayor, that you liked so much on, but trying to save some money at the wastewater treatment plant downstream, because we're treating water we don't need to treat, right? So what this is now, is there's an opportunity for the city to apply for a grant, to do a little bit more planning on the storm sewer side. So related to localized flooding, your Public Works Department has been working pretty diligently to open up ditches, make some repairs, try to get that stormwater flowing better. Jim's done a lot of work, him and his crew have done a lot of work this past summer in that. So this opportunity came up, it's to look at some more of those types of things, look at your stormwater system, do some modeling, computer modeling, figure out where some of these areas are. And hopefully, when, when, when planning is in effect, you can take all these different plans and overlap them, and maybe there's going to be some areas in town where there's a common theme going on, right? So then you can, again, the most bang for your buck type of a thing. So whether we'll be successful, if the council chooses to move forward, I don't know, but we don't know if we don't try. And so the application, excuse me, the application is in the packet. There is, it's a 90% grant, 10% match. The number that's highlighted, it's still highlighted for a reason, because the total's right, but the split's not quite right. It would be, if we go in for the $107,000 and some change, I can't remember what the exact number was, it'd be a little over $10,000 for a city match, and the rest would be, if we're successful, would be the grant. So that's, I guess, my less-than-brief explanation, but if anybody has any questions, I'd certainly try to answer, and ultimately, it's up to you guys what you'd like to do.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. I have one question, and we apply for the grant, the grant cycle, if successful, what would be the estimated time we'd know if we were awarded the grant?
I believe it's in a few months.
Okay, so it would be in 2024.
2024.
And so in 2024, based upon our levy and cutting a lot of things with, for projects and grant applications, when there's a match, that's not in this budget. So the question for me is that, if it's a 10% grant, and so if we ask for the grant, how much are we asking for, for the general?
Well, at least a little over $100,000 total.
So there'd be a 10% match in that regard?
It would be about, say, $11,000 match, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to authorize staff to apply for the grant.
Okay, moved by Councilor Johnson to allow staff, along with SH, to apply for this grant for the stormwater and wastewater resilience planning, is there support? Support by Councilor Freely, is there any further discussion? Councilor Biondich?
Never-ending question.
Mayor?
Yes, please, Sherry.
Can I answer with a question? Matt, is there in-kind services, like for Public Works, that is applied towards that match?
It's a possibility, yep, that some or all could be in-kind services. That would have to be determined, working with the Public Works Department, if the grant was successful, how we could come up with $11,000 worth of in-kind service for them to do, but yes, that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Well, we should be applying for the grant, and then if it's awarded and we can't find the money, then we don't get the grant. Please continue, Councilor Biondich.
Thank you, and I think that's where I was going, is what would happen if we did receive it, and where does it come from? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported to apply for this grant. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt, very much, thanks for your patience and your long wait. Is there anything else on the agenda that you need to address, we can move to?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Item 8.13, approve the 2024 on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Polly Gs, or for Paulies, doing business as Polly Gs.
Moved.
Moved. Support.
Moved by Councilor Motley and supported by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8.4.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilor Johnson.
I would think this would be an appropriate time to make a motion to approve the recommendation for the variance that was discussed earlier tonight.
Yeah, I was going to move it to the next one, but you certainly can make that motion right now.
I figured it's a discussion item, so.
That's very good, yep.
So I'll move that, that we approve the placement of the auxiliary building based on the recommendation of planning and zoning and meeting the requirements of planning and zoning.
At 37 Merritt Drive.
From, yes, from Midway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moved by Councilor Johnson, supported by Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. I'll move to item 8.14, that will be, it would be, there's a resolution in your packet, dated December 12, 2023, resolution setting the final tax levy for 2023, payable in 2024. Resolved by the city council of the city of Virginia that the following sum of money be levied for the current year, collectible in 2024, upon the taxable property in the city of Virginia for the following purposes. General fund levy, $5,573,0200. I'm sorry, $5,573,200. Special levy Vida, $64,974. Special levy tax abatement, $150,000. Debt levy for bond 2021A Street and Alley, $273,392. And bond indebtedness in the amount of $1,733,718 for a total levy of $7,795,284.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like a clarification on the actual dollar amount of the debt levy. What's in our packet is added in. I know Sherry gave it at one point, it was like 1. something million, but I'd like that clarified, so I can understand what we're adding together.
Sure, Councilor Paulson, it's called bonded indebtedness, it's 1 point, it's $1,733,718.
So 1, 7, 3, 3. Oh, it's right there.
718, for the total of $7,795,284.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Paulson. Has it been moved and supported? Looking for a motion, moving forward, one way or the other?
I will move the resolution as presented.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the resolution regarding setting the final tax levy for 2023, payable in 2024, is there support? Is there support? Councilor Barnzelli supports, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Biondich?
Motion fails, 4-3. Okay, next item, 8.15, is a resolution for adopting the budget for year 2024, resolved by the city council of the city of Virginia. The city council does hereby adopt the following final budget for year 2024. Revenues, revenues, the levy for the general fund, $5,573,200. Special levy Vida, $64,974. Special levy tax abatement, $150,000. Levy for bond 2021A Street and Alley bonds of $273,392. Levy bond indebtedness, $1,733,718 for a total levy of $7,795,284. Other revenues in the amount of $11,971,340. And reserves, zero, transfer in from other sources, 225,100, that's $225,100. So the total source of revenue funds of $19,991,724. Use of funds expenditures, general fund, $19,232,928. Debt service of $758,796. So the total use of funds is revenues, $19,991, I'm sorry, $19,991,724. Looking for a motion, one way or the other? Looking for a motion? Councilor Johnson?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Okay, Councilor Johnson makes a motion to approve for discussion, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Freely for further discussion, further discussion, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, since we don't have a source of almost $8 million of revenue, how do we justify a budget? What's the next step, since we do not have a levy to submit? And the current levy, if we do not act tonight, will be 21-some percent, at $600 and some thousand dollars, if we do not act on this before the end of the year?
Right, if by this not passing tonight, we have another opportunity to make adjustments if necessary, but we're required to submit the general fund levy by the end of this year. If we don't, then our levy stays at 21%. That is correct. Councilor Paulson?
Can that be clarified? What do you mean, the levy stays at 21%? The proposed levy?
The preliminary.
We said it at 21%. If we don't make some changes by the end of the year.
So I thought tonight, I thought the December 12th meeting was the meeting that we had to decide this, is that incorrect? So we can't actually have conversations about that number? We just, it didn't pass, so it's done?
Well, we haven't.
That's why I asked, do we get to talk about that again?
Yeah.
If someone wants to proffer a different number.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could do that. Well, this one failed, but we have a motion for for this one right now.
And I don't know how you can approve that without having the levy approved first.
True, but this is a resolution, so we have, we were denied. Motion, so take a vote.
But if it hasn't happened the way that it's on the sheet, I don't know how it can be voted up or down, because it's not accurate yet at this point.
So the table, the resolution?
I want to table it, but.
Has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No, roll call, please.
Aaron Zelli?
No.
Motley?
No.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Biondich?
Johnson?
No.
Okay, thank you. A motion fails, 6 to 1. Councilor Paulson.
Okay. I don't know if we want, if you want to continue that discussion or if you want to keep going down the agenda. But at, just say we went to, so I did it, just did the quick calculation at 2%, 3%, and 4%. At 2%, we would have to, so the number would be $5,402,779. We would have to shave off another $170,000. At 3%, we would have to shave $117,000 off, and at 4%, 64,484. And I'm, I know we're all trying to be mindful of employees versus what the taxpayers are looking for. I still think we can go down a little bit further based on some of those miscellaneous numbers. And I guess I would like to see it a little lower, and I don't know if we can have a conversation about that or not.
Well, we have to, we have to approve something by the end of the year or we say at 21%. So if we wanted to discuss it now, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll have to set another special meeting which to conduct the business. So we can do it here or later on down the road. So if you'd like to discuss it now, we can discuss it, so.
Well, I'd kind of like to hear if anyone that voted no has any other suggestions. I just feel like we can probably find a little bit more money to cut without cutting staff.
Do you have some suggestions in mind, Councilor Paulson?
Well, I have three scenarios. It just depends on how deep we can dig down.
Well, it's, and I probably have a fourth one, so go ahead if you like.
Sheri, is it possible to find another 170?
You know, I'd have to work with Britt and a couple of department heads. Anything's possible, you know what I mean?
Okay, then that's, Mayor, that's the number I'm gonna start at, which is the 2% number, if anything is possible. So I just want to do my math correctly. And so what I did is I, Sheri, I took the current budget, 2023, of $5,296 and, uh, $843, excuse me, and I times that times .02 or 2%. And that increase would be $105,936, which then you add back into the 2023. So the number for 2024 would be $5,402,779. But you have to add then back in the 1.733718. So I haven't, so you need a total number. If I make a resolution.
General fund. Everything else is already, all the debts already been approved. So tonight what we have to approve is the general fund levy.
Okay, so the number.
All other debt's been approved at all the public hearings we've had over the years. This is just general fund levy.
Perfect. Okay, so the general fund, I will make a motion to set the general fund levy at $5,402, excuse me, $5,402,000. I'm gonna say it three times and still get it wrong. $5,402,779 for 2024.
Okay, so 5,400, 5,402,779, which is, would be reduction from $5,573,200.
And that's a 2% increase, 2%. And we would have to cut an additional $170,421.
I would support for discussion.
Okay, a support by Councilor Motley for discussion. Further discussion. Councilor Motley?
Would you be amenable if this actually passed with the council that, with your motion that this wouldn't touch the police fire or the EMS?
I would agree to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may.
Yeah, please, Councilor Paulson.
I'm actually looking at cutting fat, like cutting expenditures versus employee. But I would agree to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So everything's on the table here. You're gonna try to reduce it. How much? We don't know. Where is that's gonna come from? Sheri will do that math and try to figure out where we can get some additional money with respect to that. My concern is that if there's fat to cut, cut it. But if there's not, and it limits our ability to do our, provide the services, even though we're keeping our employees intact, you're not gonna be able to provide some of the services, then if there's an easy way to cut that money immediately, and that is to cut the healthcare benefits for the city council. That's an easy thing to do. People aren't adversely affected by it. We're the only community, city council, that gets health insurance. Does it adversely affect me? It does. So I heard everybody here tonight, and I heard everybody that called me on the phone, left nasty notes on my car or my neighbor's car for me, and then, and all those kinds of things. So I get it. I understand it. You want to cut. Well, we have to set an example in that regard. If we're gonna cut any more than that, by cutting the fat, you're cutting, you might cut services. But I think everything should be on the table then, just like I said in the very beginning. If we can cut the fat, we cut it. We cut it 2%. You can come up with that information. That's fine. But I think the healthcare benefits are, have to be on the table as well. So you have to look at all those things, Sheri, as you're looking to cut. There's no fat to cut. Or if there is. Councilor Biondich and then over to Councilor Friedle. Councilor Biondich.
And I know in your motion you included, did you do public works?
No, but I, if Councilor Paulson was okay with amending her motion, I'd be okay with that also.
I mean, I'm looking at core services from, for the citizens. It's public works, public safety.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Friedle.
Just for sake of discussion, because I am retired, I'm on Medicare, so the health insurance, yeah, it's beneficial to me, but it's not something that I absolutely need. But I guess when you talk about no other city does this, every other city that I know of provides a stipend to counselors on a monthly basis. Ours, I think, is $300 a month.
Mm-hmm.
So we've creatively taken that $300 a month, rolled that into joining the pool for the insurance. So we're taking that, we're not just, we're not granted health insurance. We're taking the money that we're stipended for and rolling it into the pool so that we can provide health insurance to ourselves. I think people need to understand that. Other cities don't do that. We've done that. So it's not like we're being given health insurance. We're taking the stipends that were provided and rolling that in to be provided health insurance so that we can join the pool. Am I correct?
Yes, but there's a cost to that. We, you're only paying 10% of that premium, you know, the city pays 90%. And then we also cover your deductibles. So that's, you know, $2,000 or $4,000, depending if you have single or family.
And so, yeah, and like I said, we already proposed at 80/20. We could propose 75/25. We could do 50/50. We could eliminate it entirely. I'm not, I'm not opposed to setting that example, to be honest with you. But I think the way we've done this has been creative, to provide health insurance by utilizing the stipends we're given to roll it into purchasing health insurance through the pool, so that they understand we're not just being given.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Friedle. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just clarify that I would include, as Councilor Motley and Paulson, I'm, it's so late, yeah, bitch. So it would include all emergency personnel and public works, correct?
Well, clarify, please, one more. Your, the cuts will be not in those core services, right? That's, okay, thank you.
So you, can I ask, Mayor?
Yes, Sheri.
So you're looking for an overall cut of $328,116.
My math incorrect?
Well, you wanted 5 million.
We're at 200.
402.
5.4 million.
Yeah, because we're at 2, we're only at 276 right now. You couldn't cut 300,000 out of there. So it's, it's just, that 2% is, you're just adding 105,000 to the existing budget, which is 5.402. And that, if you minus out the 2024 proposed 5.573, minus 5402, that's an additional $170,421 in cuts. That's what I'm hoping we can accomplish.
I just want to give a cautionary that that probably will be staff. I hope you got, I mean, I just hope you guys understand that. I understand it's not gonna be in the core services, but we can't eliminate all miscellaneouses. There are things in the miscellaneous that we have to allocate and re-code to a better place. So that, just saying, we're cutting all miscellaneous out of everybody's budget, it's not gonna work. It's going to be staff. And it's, it does, it's not gonna be core service staff, but it's going to be other staff.
Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I respect that. I respectfully don't agree with what you're saying because when we were at 20%, that was meaning cutting staff. And this entire time, we've been given charts that say it's gonna cut staff. And Britt, when I, when I spent hours and hours, like hours, and I find that, wow, this is like way out of whack here. And instead of, we were given a chart that riled up the entire community, both employees who were very angry the night of that meeting, as well as taxpayers. So I don't, I don't want to hear that as a threat. I want a solution as to how we can creatively figure out this number. And I believe that we can do it based upon what I've just been looking at.
Now, I'd like to point out that this budget does have employee loss. We are attritioning out multiple positions. So to say that there's no employee loss is incorrect. There's no people lost, but there's positions lost. So we have lost people.
We're doing it through attrition, and we've made that very clear.
Correct. But we, no, we're not talking about it today. So when I say that there's staff lost, yes, there is positions lost. Yes, we have reduced.
There's no staff lost. There is positions lost.
But people, people in the audience said we need to reduce staff. We are. We did. We have. We are reducing the number of bodies we were supposed to have in locations. That has happened.
And I'm just saying that I think we can do better. And that was my motion. And I don't, I don't, I don't make that motion lightly, but I'm listening to what people are saying. And they cannot afford the increases. And I don't think that services are going to have to be cut. I think those are things that people say to make people feel, I'm not gonna use the word, but it causes feelings that it doesn't need to cause. We need to figure this out. These are numbers. We are, we need to figure it out.
Okay, so your motion is?
My motion is 2%, whatever the number was, 5.
5 million?
5.402779.
Right, and you're.
General fund.
Okay, so you, the motion is on the floor, and it's been moved and supported, and we'll be voting on that. So it doesn't make any difference where this comes from, as long as we can cut to that number. That's the number you're looking for, correct?
Without cutting any.
Yeah, police fire or, or public works, EMS.
Or public works, EMS, correct.
Correct, that was part of the motion, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, has been moved and supported. Further discussion, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I know exactly how much money I get every month in my checking account from this job, because I do live paycheck to paycheck. I know that on average I get a check, my account gets between $400 and $425 a month. That's a $300 stipend. That's $100 per committee meeting every day, every, twice a month. Last month, I missed a meeting because I was substitute teaching because I can make more than $100 in a meeting. And also, we get extra $35 from here and there for other meetings. I know exactly how much money goes into my bank account, so I know exactly how much money is floating around. I truly believe our staff, our department heads, our employees, our ask-me employees, our ma employees, police, fire, have all done everything in their power to cut this budget. But when we get an email saying, but we need to keep the $10,000 for music in the park because it's popular, that's a problem for me. If we are truly cutting everything, then we cut everything. Maybe we only mow once a month in the parks instead of every two weeks. Maybe we don't, maybe we don't snowplow on Saturdays and Sundays because we need to keep the overtime down. I don't know. But we are doing this thing where we're not gonna cut any essential services. Then what? Then what is next? I cannot, I can, I will not be supporting the levy at a, at a number come up with here without having the staff vet it. I trust our staff. Our staff have been doing this job for years. The people that make the decisions in this town live in this town. There are seven of us elected. We make those decisions. It has to, it's illegal for anybody to imply that someone who is working for the city can't not live in the city, that they have to live within the city limits. That is a, that's a state statute that shouldn't even be brought up in this room, ever. People can live where they want, and they can work where they get a job. I'm proud of our staff. I'm proud of the work that they have done hours and hours and hours before August 15th. This didn't start August 15th. Last year, when we were having contract negotiations, we were discussing how do we pay for this year and next year and the year after. It really isn't as simple as just nonessential. And I've had this discussion about the library a thousand times. It's low-hanging fruit because a lot of people who come to these meetings don't go to the library. They don't see what happens at the library. They don't see what happens when kids who have nothing get to go to library programs and get enrichment and might get a spark that's gonna last their life so they can sit in this seat. We have to be logical about this. We're gonna cut to the point where there is nothing, that we will be working from 8 to 4, Monday through Friday, and that's what the city will be open. I am willing to give up my insurance. It's the only insurance. Prior to being on the city council, I have not had insurance. I am 48 years old. And prior to getting on the council, I have had zero health insurance. I am blessed and thankful that I have single-family coverage, or single coverage for myself, so that when I have to get my diabetes medication and all that other stuff, it's great. But if it's gonna make the difference between keeping the library open and me sitting here, take it away. I don't need it. I need it. I don't want it. But you're right, Amanda. It's not been discussed at length in this room. How do we adjust that? We have to make logical decisions. And we got, you put us here to make decisions for you. You're trusting us to do the best we can. We all have different points of view, and so we come to theoretically a compromise at some point. I thought 5 point whatever was an amazing compromise coming down from 21. And that's because the staff keep looking and working and looking and working. So I won't be supporting anything moving forward when it goes to levy or the budget until there's stuff to back it up. I think setting a goal like that and saying figure it out is unfair to our staff. I think that it's something that we, they've already done all the work. And if there's other ideas that the seven of us elected officials have, I think they need to be concrete, a concrete directive, cut this, cut this, and cut this. Because I'm concerned that after, when the, when it starts rolling down, we're gonna hear from anybody, the general public, from counselors, from the staff, well, the staff recommended this, so that's why we did it. Uh-uh. I make the decision for the citizens, and I will hold myself responsible. I have said many times in this room that, yes, I am responsible for setting the levies of the past seven years. I've been doing this for seven years. Most of us in here have done this more than once, more than twice, more than five times, that it's come down to, well, I didn't really understand it. That frustrates me beyond belief, because we've been sitting here. We've been doing this already. I get it. When I have questions, I ask. So as we move forward, I'm willing to look at other numbers, but I want to see the work and the information prior to setting a number and saying good luck to the staff, because they have done their job. And I wrote down, we're already not hiring positions we need. We're not hiring a tech person for the city. We're not hiring a tech person for the library. We're, there's a retirement or two coming. We're not hiring a whole lot of people at the Air and Trum Motors Event Center. We've held off, we're finally right-sized at the fire department and the ambulance service. The police department is right-sized for now. We've done all that work. At some point, we have to spend some money, or we're not gonna be able to. At some point, we have to spend some money, or we're not going to be able to move forward. We need to increase our tax base. How do we do that? Three-apartment buildings would have been phenomenal. That's a lot of people living in the city of Virginia. Having some other stores come in, great, we're working really hard to help them all so that they can increase our tax base. It's a multi-levered thing. One of the things that I haven't seen anywhere is that the city of Hibbing gets twice as much mining money that the city of Virginia does. That hasn't been brought up in here at all. We got a little chart, I saw a chart, I don't even remember where anymore, it's so much. They get more money than we do from the mining companies. It's not equally distributed amongst. So yes, it's different. They're all different cities. I've had people reach out to me and say, I used to live in the metro, our taxes here are amazing, and the service is impeccable. Plowing, the luth doesn't plow on the weekends. If you remember, a couple of snowstorms ago, it was four, five days before some people got out. Our folks are out that next day. You can get, I can get out of my alley at 7:00 in the morning because we prioritize as a city plowing alleys so people can get out of their driveways so they can go to work. So my frustration level is high as well. And I want people to understand that I'm a taxpayer. My, mine on my house, my $50,000 house is now a $64,000 house. That's where I choose to live. My, my proposed went up 200 and some dollars. For me, that's half my city paycheck. So putting things into perspective, I'm well aware of that, but I also want to know that we need to keep the city going. My daughter wants to be the mayor. I hope there's a city here, and if we keep cutting, I'm concerned about that. We have to pay our people, and they are excellent at their jobs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So the motion on the floor is to set the, find, set, the motion is to set the levy at I'm not going to support this either until I see a number. It could be less than that. We may not be able to reach that. But I'd like staff to do the research before I vote for a finite number. I mean, I understand, I get it, we didn't vote, it didn't pass. We have to pass something by the end of the year, which we're, we're pressured to do so. But the number, I thank you, Counselor Paulson, for putting that number together, but I, you know, that's a number is based upon a suggestion of some general cuts that could or could not be made, and I don't know if they're possible to make them. I'd like staff to review that, take a look at that, and then if they can come up with such savings, hey, I'm all for that. But this number here, it may or may not be reachable. So we make a motion to do this, and they can't reach that, then what? I'd like to know what additional cuts can be made to reach this number. That's all I'm seeing. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. One thing that I'd like to note on the, although the Iron Trail Motors Event Center is a special revenue fund, we are doing a transfer in, and that would be a count ending in 342 from MAC for $985,000. And I would just like to ask that if we do consider, Sheri, as you do consider these numbers, that instead of transferring that full amount, that you would reduce the trans, reduce, do a reduction in the transfer dollar amount, so that would leave more money in the general fund. So if we need to adjust those other professional services or miscellaneous or what have you in any of those special revenue funds, but especially because we are transferring in from the general fund to this special revenue fund, that instead of transferring in the full 985, you could just, you know, do a reduction, however, you're going to do it on the general fund side. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make any wrong suggestions. I just, I'm listening to people, and I don't think that people can afford this. I think it's, we need to work harder. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Once again, I would like to reiterate that whether it's 2%, 1%, 0%, 4%, whatever that is, that number, and I have to agree with Counselor Johnson, that we've done, I think our staff has done yeoman's work. They make these suggestions to us. We make the decision. So those who have indicated that, that work hasn't been done, it really has, we have to make the decision based upon what we can afford, what we can't afford. And so the number that you're suggesting here of $5,402,779, if, if we can't cut in the fat there, and we make a motion, we pass this, and we mandate our staff to get to that number, it could result in layoffs. Could, you know, who knows? Who knows? So I'd like to know what the ramifications are before, to reach this number before I can vote for the motion. I would direct staff to take a look at it and come back, we'll have to have a special meeting to come back and let us know where we're going to cut, get all that information, find out everything that's, that we can do to get it to that level. But just to put this number down now, if we can't get there, it could result in some staff layoffs too. So if that's the case, maybe that number has to change as well. Maybe it has to be lower. I don't know. So I'd like, you know, staff has done their work, they have all the, they can plug in the numbers, and so we'll have to live with whatever decision we make. But I think that if we're going to require staff to do more work on this, I think that that number could change, or it could be less, or it could be more. So I'm going to vote no on the motion to, to set it at this number. I would, I would prefer to have us have a motion to have staff look at how we can get to this number, not actually setting that number. So that's all, that's all I'm saying. So, and it's been, has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. Part of me wants to have another discussion on this, another meeting to look through this. I think I'm okay with the number, but I also almost want to see what it will affect. If we were to do that, how soon could we do it?
Well, we, the motion on the floor is to set that number. And if that passes, that number gets set, and staff has the direction, the directive to find these, find the cuts to that number. And we have to have a posting of at least three days in advance, so by the time we do that work, it could be two, three, four days, I don't know, whatever it takes. And then we have to post another meeting, it has to be three days in advance, and then we could have the meeting there. So we'd have to have something before Christmas, before the December 25th. We could do that if, if these cuts can be found and enlisted out to what they are. But we have to have, we have to have a motion, we have to pass something by the end of the year. Otherwise, it refers back to 21%. Pam?
Have a question.
Sure.
For the attorney. Would we need to have another hearing?
Probably be best to continue this one.
Well, the meeting or the previous hearing? We already closed it. Don't have to? Okay. It would just be further discussion.
Mayor? This has to be into the state by the 28th of December because the 30th falls on a weekend.
Yes, so we have to have the decision, the motion passed by no later than the 28th of December, correct? Okay, thank you. And the legal opinion is that we likely will not have to have another public hearing, but we would have it at a public meeting, obviously, and invite everybody else that was here tonight, and maybe more would come. So we have to figure that out. So we'd have to set a date prior to December the 28th. We should do it before Christmas because if we don't make a decision, then we're going to, you know, we're going to have to give ourselves a little buffer here, so. It has been moved and supported to set the levy at $5,402, $5,402,779. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Friedle?
No, I'm ready to vote on that.
Oh, no, okay, okay. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing and saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No, no.
Roll call, please.
Cuffey?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
That pass? That's not spending money, right? You're just sending a, well, that passes, correct? That's not upsetting, so it does pass, okay. Motion passes, four to three. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Can, what was the vote for the first, for the first levy of the 5,000 or 5,500?
It was four to three.
It was four to three. So if the second one passed, why did the first one not pass?
Let's go back now. Let's, let's rewind. So what, read back on 8.4, that would be the final tax levy, did that pass?
Well, it was four to three, yes.
Four to three, to set the levy, yes.
Same, same type of resolution, but it was four to three, and you said it failed. 20 for 2024. So it would have passed. If this is passing, four to three. That would not be spending money either then.
So this motion discussed was all for not? So under 8.14, setting the final tax levy for 2023 payable in 2024, with a total levy of $7,795,000, no, $7,795,284, that passed, 8.14, under 43 vote? 8.5, adopting budget year 2024, what was the final vote for that?
Six no, one yes.
So we passed the levy, but not the budget? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought it stated in our bylaws, we do need a supermajority of 5 to 3 to pass a levy, vacate streets and pass levies. I'm pretty sure. And I think that's what happened. The last one, we couldn't reach an agreement.
That's why I said-
Because we kept hitting 5 or 4, 3, or whatever it was.
That's what I said, motion failed, because that's what I thought too, so.
The last resolution failed. Would fail, not be passed.
So both resolutions failed.
Correct.
Because they need a 5 to 3.
What does Section 8.01 say?
Excuse me, 5 to 2.
Apologize for the confusion here, we'll figure it out. All right, just have to take a couple of minutes because it's been a kind of long meeting, and our city clerk's battery went dead on the computer, so I was just going to replace it, so we'll just give us five more minutes here until... Okay, we have a, we have a clarification. Under Section Point, Section 208 of our city charter, it takes a 2/3 majority vote to pass. So, and, so the both did fail. So we're on to the motion by Counselor Paulson.
Can I ask a question? How, okay, can we read back what, so who vote, how many votes did that motion get?
8.14, the final tax levy for 2023 payable in 2024 was a 4 to 3 vote.
4 to 3, okay, thank you.
And the 8.15 was 6 to 1. Okay, so those, both of those failed. And so do we still have a motion on the floor for this $5,402,779? We did vote, okay. And that passed? That failed, okay? Okay. So we still can make another motion. And I would be amenable to, with a little clarification, and direct staff to try to find, yeah?
Excuse me? So what's the verdict? Hold on, first-
Under eight point one four, which is setting the final levy for two thousand twenty-three payable in two thousand twenty-four was four to three. Four to three.
Need a five-two. No, we need five-two.
Five-two.
We need super majority.
It failed. Both of them failed. Okay, so, and this one failed, so I'm amenable to directing staff to look at how more, much more we can reduce, maybe not that number, but as low as we can go based upon your, your, the, which you articulated, Counselor Paulson. I would-
Amenable to that.
I would, I would be amenable to that. So the motion would be to direct staff to...
And do you want me to use that same number? Or do you want to just say additional cuts?
Uh, for me, it's, 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 the number could be less, it could be more. Just have refine, have staff research and find as much, many cuts as possible, and articulate, articulate those cuts to all of us. You know, there's no motion, articulate it all for all of us, so, uh, we can discuss that the next committee of the whole meeting. Counselor Freedley?
I guess, you know, we were tasked with completing a task tonight, on this date, and a lot of time and effort was put into paring it down from twenty-one, and the last discussion I had was eight point one nine, and it came down to five point two-two. We were getting to the point where we were at least somewhat palatable to the public. Most of the information that I got from people in the public was, get it down to five at least. And, yes, it would be preferable to get it down lower, but the lower we go, the higher it will be next year. You not, you gotta realize that as well. And so, all the time and effort that we put into paring it down from where we were, paring it down from where we were, to where we got tonight, to complete the task, we accomplished the task. We just haven't voted accordingly to get it done. And people may not agree with me on that, but the truth is, that was our homework assignment. All of those people put in that time and effort to do so. Sheri's determined the number she needs to be able to continue to operate this community with the services provided at a level that people need and are comfortable with, and we're still hedging on that. And I can understand why, because it's a difficult decision to make, but the decision has to be made. And we've done all the homework necessary to pare it down from twenty-one to eight point nine, one point nine, eight point one nine, to now five-two-two. I, I think it's time to complete the task. That's my suggestion. And I'm welcome to have any other further input and conversation with regard to that, prior to making that motion, to complete the task that all the time and effort has been put in to do, to get to this point tonight. So I welcome that further discussion, prior to any motion being made.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Freedley. Counselor, uh, Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And Counselor Freedley, I don't disagree with you in any way, shape, or form, there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. What I, what I would say, and where I'm coming from, is that we're taking the initial hit of the one point one million dollar debt lev, or debt service in twenty twenty-four. Now, in twenty twenty-five, that will already be a part of the budget, so you're not going to feel that hit again. So whatever we can minimize in twenty twenty-four to, to offset that huge hit, is what I'm looking to try to do and to accomplish, so that in twenty twenty-four, for the twenty twenty-five budget, we wouldn't really have to go very much higher. So if we can pare our spending down right now, take the hit on the twenty twenty-four, the one point one million dollars, then in my opinion, you're, 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 you're creating a scenario that's palatable for taxpayers. In the reverse situation, they're going to get hit and then hit again. So that's where, that's why I'm pushing, and I'm, sorry I'm pushing, but I'm, I'm hoping we can get lower.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Freedley?
And I don't disagree with that, that there needs to be consider, and that, I mean, there was considerations to whittle it further, but the reason that I chose to vote no on your last motion was because it left about a hundred and, what is it, seventy thousand dollars of mystery cuts that I just wasn't comfortable with, not knowing what those would be or who those would be. So I, I just couldn't go to that level. And at the five point two-two, we've already determined where we were at with who would be, what those reductions would be. Yeah, the further we go into it, there are some additional reductions that could be made, um, but we're at the point of completing the task tonight, and I was comfortable at the five point two-two. I just can't vote for mystery cuts and further communication with regard to that, because I don't think we have the time to do that. We were told on the twelfth to finish our homework assignment. I'm turning in my homework assignment.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Freedley. Uh, Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, and I, and I don't disagree with you, um, but we have till the twenty-eighth. We set a date of this, um, to work on it, and, and I was comfortable, but if we have room for a little bit more, I'm okay with that. And that's why I asked if there would, if we could, I don't know if we should call for a meeting on it, or, I'm comfortable coming in and talking to the both of you, to see what else, you know, where else we can tweak this. Um, I don't disagree, but we do have until the end of the month, or the twenty-eighth, to set this. We set this date to, we wanted to be working on this and getting towards that end goal, but not quite ready to quit yet. So, I'm okay having a meeting again, where we can discuss this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Well, we still have to make, give direction to staff. Come on up. Anybody have some questions, anybody? Turn the green light on if you would, please. Uh, we, we know you already said your name, Amanda, so thank you.
And I'm not, I'm here right now, just as a citizen, staying watching this.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you.
Um, to, taking off that hat, but we're talking about the difference between a two percent, as functionally, I think is what Counselor Paulson, and a six percent. And having seen the data from the county on tax assessed values, over fifty percent of the homes in this town are worth a hundred thousand dollars or less. And the difference that we're talking about on an annual basis between two and six for those homes, is something like thirty dollars, over the course of an entire year. And what it means is tying the city's hands, and your ability to budget for things like overtime and unexpected expenses, and, you know, if I put that hat back on for a second, wage increases to keep jobs, and to keep people, and to keep valued employees. And you're tying your hands, instead of taking that, just that little extra percent. And if you don't spend it, great. But what you're doing by saying, we have to get down to this two percent mark, is tying your hands. And it's not saving the taxpayers a huge amount of money. There are something like thirty homes in this entire town that are valued over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And those are the voices, I think, that have been the loudest in this conversation. The vast majority of the homes are, would see something like thirty dollars a year in savings, over what you're haggling over right now. And that's, well, sorry. And I, and I understand that money is money, but it's also, I, I just, I don't understand. I don't understand kicking this can down the road and putting this further time pressure on. And furthermore, in a situation where you're kicking this closer to Christmas and to this deadline, you're closing the conversation to people who may want to have their input, like those who came tonight. Um, and all of that input is valuable, and I know that sometimes, as a union representative, we're on different sides than, you know, some of that, but this is all valued input, and everybody deserves to have their chance to be heard. And what we're doing by moving that down another week, or another two weeks, or however much time you have left, is closing that off, instead of just setting the levy, or completing the homework assignment, or finishing the quiz as it is. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, come on up, Mr. Lancy.
I'd just like to mention the other half of the city. So College Park, Fairview Edition, at the opposite end of the spectrum, I've heard many, many of those people, that they're already at the wall. And some of them that aren't there, everybody's looking down the road, that's where we're looking. We're looking at next year, you know, so whatever you choose for levy next year, not going to be acceptable, if people are already against the wall. So you've got a young couple there, paying for a three hundred thousand dollar house, young kids. On the other end of the spectrum, you've got a group of people there that are my age, no kids, house might be paid for, but they're rolling in on their savings. And they're looking at their house, and they're saying, my God, this is going to cost me five thousand dollars this year. What's going to happen two years from now? And don't get me going on Fairview Edition. You know, I understand the whole deal up there, that if, once you have a value over four hundred thirteen thousand dollars, you don't get the homestead. But I don't care how much money you have, how much dough you're making, when you're looking at fifteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, those houses are unsellable. I mean, put, put yourself in their position, too. So I, I respect Amanda's, you know, looking out for the, the bottom end there, and I understand that correlation between the dollars, but we have to look at the whole spectrum of this, too. So, I mean, you got, you have people that are seriously looking, looking at that. College Park was running around four thousand, previous to our big levy, and they were saying it was going to go up over a thousand. So they were looking at five. There's people sitting here now that are, are over five, and, and looking at what the increase is. There's, there's got to be a, a huge cultural change in the amount of money we're spending here. And next year's levy's not going to be any different. It won't be acceptable. It's only seven months from now. Seven months. We're going to, Maya was correct, Counselor Pulse, um, Biondich was correct. We got to pound this levy every single day, from now till next, uh, September. There's, there's going to be no letting up here. This is some super big issues. You've got people that can't sell their house. What, you know, what do you do there? Or, or you walk out of there and take a huge loss? And, and who's going to come in knowing that property taxes are five, eight, ten, ten thousand dollars? Who's coming in there? You know, so we, we got to look at that whole spectrum. We just can't pick out the bottom end and say we're not gaining much there, and that may be true. We've got to look at the other end, too. The big picture i- is the, the massive amount of spending, the hiring, the building, everything we've done, now we have to, we're going to have to live with it. You know, we really got to, we're going to really have to make it work. So, every, everything has got to be considered here. You have to look at the people that have expensive homes, so that's, that's part of the demographic of this city, we need them. You know? We don't want to give them the mountain iron at twenty-nine percent.
Hi, I'm Brenda Scorich. Um, I've sat here since before five o'clock, listening to all of this. I've also come to other meetings. Um, I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, um, and I know I have emailed the mayor, the council. I first of all want to say, Julianne, you go, girl. If you could find more cuts, you do it. Um, I'm going to go back to what Greg said three hours ago at six oh one, when he complimented the three gals on this council, who have worked diligently to say no, and to stand up for us taxpayers. We're the ones that pay everyone's bills, and I'm getting tired of paying for excess. I don't have excess in my budget to keep paying, and paying, and paying. Something has to give. I do have another place to move to very easily. It's up on Lake Vermilion. It's not a fancy mansion, it's a nineteen fifty-nine cabin. But you know what? It's valued far more than my house in Virginia. It's got a much better view, and my taxes are less. Tell me what's wrong with that. It is non-homestead, because the valuation is over the limit. Tell me what's wrong there. I can pack up and move, but like what's been said, can I sell my house in town? Will anyone want it? With, because we are number one in the state for taxes? If there's more to cut, let's find it, let's cut it. Let's help not only me, I'm not in the Fairview Edition, I'm in Little Old Vets Edition. Let's help everybody in this town, from the bottom to the top. Thank you.
So Sheri, I'm going to ask you, for the people in this room, who are speaking for every other citizen that hasn't come to this meeting, whether they are concerned about it or not. So, we're one component of property tax guidelines. You've got the county raising their taxes, raising their fees, unfunded mandates for us. You've got the school district raising their taxes fourteen point nine percent. So, that adds to your taxes as well. So if we were to set our levy at zero, what kind of, what kind of a, what kind of effect would that have on everybody's taxes? What really, if you look at the big scheme of things, how much money would you save if we had a zero percent levy? Calculate that for us.
I'd love to, but I do not have that calculator.
No, but, I mean... How much?
I'd like to know what it'd do to your taxes, though, I think that's the question.
Yeah, we want to know what we did, what it does for our tax if we set a zero percent levy.
So it will, um, on a home that is valued at seventy-five thousand, it would increase by, um, fourteen dollars a year. On a home that's at a hundred thousand, it would increase by twenty-two dollars a year. On a home that is a hundred and fifty thousand, it would increase by forty dollars a year. On a home that two hundred thousand, it would increase by fifty-seven dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand, it would increase by seventy-four dollars. In a three hundred thousand dollar home, ninety-two dollars.
Ninety-two.
At zero, which would re, with the fiscal disparity, would reduce, uh, down to a total overall levy of three point one eight three percent.
So, if you take, eh, eh, at five point two-two, on a three hundred thousand dollar home, uh, it was, it's two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. So if, per year. So if you take off, yeah, who's got a calculator? Two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, minus ninety-two dollars. By sending a percent to this levy at zero, you're saving a hundred and... Two seventy-four, seventy-eight, minus ninety-two dollars. I'm sorry, uh, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents, minus ninety-two dollars.
Hundred and eighty-two.
So, eh, eh, that's a difference of a hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy cents, by going from five point two-two to zero. And that's the savings from the Virginia taxes in that regard. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's a cost savings, so, but we have, we have to make that decision, so we're going to have to have another meeting to talk about it. Mr. Lancy?
I think the point was that it's the accumulative effect.
I know, I know what you're saying.
That we're looking at.
I completely understand that.
Yeah. It won't end, it never ends, it just keeps going.
Yeah, I've been here a long time, and I understand exactly what you're saying. But I'm just pointing out, you said a zero percent levy, this is where you're at. Okay? And at zero percent levy, then, of course, the, our revenues go down because mining affects tax, it was, we don't, we don't get that money, so... Okay, so, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any way that, I mean, yes, we were tasked to do homework and to make a decision. Is there any way that we can come to some sort of a, agreement this evening at all?
We could make any motion we want, if it passes, or directing staff to take it to do it.
To be respectful of staff, though, too, I mean, do you, I, I guess I just, I would like to make- to make it, I mean, I would like to hit the deadline, but if we have to have another meeting, we have to have another meeting. But, I mean, let's just put it into realistic perspective. And it would be, if we could maybe understand, I mean, so like one of my conversations with some, with Britt was, and Sheri, I think we were all three together, was we want to know what you want. Like what do you, you've got to tell us what you want. And, and then I hear, well, staff has to tell us what staff needs and then we'll, we'll do that based on that. But in my opinion, we need to listen to what the taxpayers are saying. And we need to say, this is what the taxpayers want. So how do we make what that want is, how do we make that function within our current budget capabilities right now? So I don't know if we can come to some sort of a resolution this evening about any further cuts. At 3%, you're cutting 117 grand instead of at 2%, 170 grand. I just, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Sheri. I just want to know if there's any way that we could come to some sort of a consensus
Sheri?
We come to a gentleman's agreement and land at four.
So a 4% is reducing by 64,000. Could we go 3.5?
You're not like Amanda mentioned, you're not going to have any room for, you have two contracts for negotiations. I'll be quite honest with you, you're not going to have any room. None. I would like to see, you know, the ability to work with the other unions and staff and some of the ideas that were brought up and work with that and see if we can reduce that and also work with some of these, the Iron Trail Motors Events Center. And, and really, it's going to have to be a wake-up call. They've got to get some revenue in there. You have to make $200,000 a month for the way they're spending. Either cut the spending or increase your revenue, but it's got to equal.
So could we hit a 3.5 if we got some of those other issues under control?
Well, the only way I could is I could eliminate, you know, the OPEB investment account, which is, it's not good for the audit. We put 40,000 in there every year. It's up to 3 million now. Yes, the main bulk of our expenses, 12.3 million, is in labor and benefits. Out of a 19.9 million dollar, there's your cost. So you're looking at, yeah. You could cut things like, you know, that. I can't cut the insurance. The insurance is what it is as far as workman's comp and, and the property insurance. We, you know, we try to keep our incidents and our injuries down by sharing, making sure that our employees are trained, that they have public, you know, the proper protection. But thankfully, the winter has been mild so far and we don't have the slips, trips, and falls like we normally do.
So if I'm going to 4% on the spreadsheet?
That means Music in the Park will go. And you can cry all you want. Get me some sponsors. No. So I mean, why not? I mean, why should the city be paying for those bands? I mean, it's great, but it's an expense.
Okay, okay. So while she's looking at that, you brought up Music in the Park. When it first came about, we provided the venue, electricity, everything was fine. People come up and jam all they wanted at anything. Anybody could come up and play the band, no problem. People come and jam. Well, now we pay the bands. It's not, it's not cutting Music in the Park. It's available for anybody to use. That venue has always been available. We're just paying for the band. But the many people in this room don't want to cut Music in the Park because it's a great venue. Well, it is, but we're paying for the bands. We're scheduling the bands. They used to.
They've always.
But not very often. Sometimes there won't be anybody up there. Sometimes there'll be somebody, so.
Certain in 2020 during COVID, we had some money to do some outdoor recreation things because that's all you could do at the time was go outside. So we had a little bit of grant money and we were trying to get sponsors back then and nobody really pitched in. And it's just evolved into this massive program now that is, it really draws, draw a lot of people, but it is costly.
$11,000 a year. We fund the city band, $10,000 a year. They provide a concert series on Thursday nights. If we cut, it was 5%. When we added $11,000, it became the 5.22. So, Councillor Paulson, you still working over there?
Well, I guess if I'm at 3.5, the total with the tax, I mean, the fiscal disparity, it would go total of 7.4%. I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see if we could get there tonight, if there's any way possible. Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you, Councillor Paulson. So suggestions? You want a 0% levy? And then that way you won't, you won't have to pay the extra on a $300,000 a home, extra $182 a year. Or on another home, $14 more a year.
And we can cut your neighbor's job. This of the community was, get it down to five or below if you can. 5.22 after all that time and effort? And we're still trying to like, do the limbo? As low as you can go? It impacts other people. And those people are taxpayers as well, who hold jobs in this city and would lose that job. So how low do we want to go? I don't know. I thought we got it to the point where we could complete the task for this levy season. And I just, I don't know what else to tell you. I'm as frustrated as the rest of you and I'm a taxpayer in this town as well. So, and, and yeah, do I want to pay the 5.22? Not really, because it's costing me that too. But I want to make the decision, because that's the job I've been given, to make the decision. And I'm not being allowed to. Because we want to go lower, which yeah, that'd be great, but the lower you go, people lose jobs. Neighbors lose jobs. Services are cut. Things that are popular in a park are cut. City band is cut. What, I mean, where do you, 5.22 is where we stopped. You know? And is it as good as it could be? No. But we still maintain some of those amenities that we enjoy in the city. So anyhow, it's, it's a frustrating thing to go through, but we have to make decisions. You can't keep kicking it down the road.
And the economic pressures on everybody is immense, coming from all angles, including the city. So we need to function and provide the services. And, and I don't mean this with disrespect, but we're quibbling over a little bit, even though it's cumulative over time. You know, adjustments can be made later on down the road. So, sir, please state your name for the record.
Brian Saboda.
Welcome.
I'm a taxpayer here in Virginia, but that little bit of money is a lot to my family, all right? I work two full-time jobs to support my kids. You know what I mean? So that little bit of money may seem like just a little bit, but it's a lot to my family. You know what I mean? So it's, it's worth quibbling over, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Now, that's, that's true for a lot of families in this community. Councillor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Sheri, after kind of just hearing maybe that we can go there at 4%, I would like to make a motion to set the levy at the 4% mark, which would be a total for the general levy, That would not, including any police, fire, EMS, or public works. So that amount again was $5,508,716. Support.
There's a motion on the floor by Councillor Paulson to set the final tax levy payable in 2024 at $5,508,716. Supported by Councillor Motley. Is there any further discussion? First, Councillor Johnson, then back to Councillor Paulson, then to Councillor Motley, and then over to Councillor Biondich. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I still cannot support anything that doesn't have the numbers in front of me on what we're cutting. Because we've identified music, that's only 20,000. We still need 50. It's not fair to the staff to say, here's the budget, figure it out. And then they come back to us and we go, oh, nope, nope. What's happened with this? Nope, we can't cut Music in the Park. Nope, we can't. I can't support it until I have the numbers in front of me, which has been a consistent theme of this council for, for years. We don't vote on anything until we know exactly what we're supporting and what we're cutting or what we're adding. So I will not be supporting this based on that precedence.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Motley? Oh, hang on, could you hold on just one moment? Sheri?
So that doesn't drag out too much longer here. I would suggest taking from the contingency fund and not investing the 40,000 into OPEB this next year. So we could go half and half. Yes, do accommodate this new.
Okay, run that, but run this by us one more time. $40,000 out of the OPEB contribution. I get that.
And the remainder out of the contingency fund that I have budgeted.
And how much is that?
Okay, what's the difference? 64, I think it is. So 24. So 40,000 would come out of the OPEB, so that'd make it 24,000 some odd dollars out of the contingency fund.
Okay. All right, thank you. So there you have it. There you have it. So that gets us to $5,508.17. Is that correct? All right, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Biondich?
I almost hate to ask, what is the total in that contingency fund that you'll be taking? I mean, what is the?
I will get you the, after I take them.
Sorry, yes.
That would be $170,971.
That would be available?
That would be available for any problems.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you. Councillor Biondich, any other comments, questions, concerns? Please, Britt?
We haven't said it yet, so I just want to make sure it gets pointed out that there is zero, almost zero capital purchases. There's no ambulances, no police cars, no loaders, nothing for public works. Very, very small capital purchases. And this is exactly why you've been asking all these years, Councillor Biondich, why we don't, why are we doing a bond for these capital purchases? Because when it gets to levy like this, if we don't levy enough, we don't have money to do capital purchases. So there's zero being planned for next year. No playground upgrades, no park upgrades, no splash pad, nothing is being planned for next year because we don't have enough funds to do that.
Councillor Biondich?
And thank you for that.
Yeah, this is real life example of how that happens, what happens, why we do that.
Right. And I think when we've had large purchases, I've often asked where, you know, we have to bond for everything. So going back to the earlier conversation, for next year, things won't be as tight next year. So if we can get through this year and work towards that in the future.
At our next meeting, the next council meeting, we'll have the 10-year capital that we need you guys to approve also as part of our bond. We need that for our bond ratings and such. But you'll see on that one in '24, there's only $40,000 of capital and I moved everything over to next year and hope well next year we can buy those things that we need.
Thank you.
And I want to reference too with what we're saying, but that we, as a council, know, council and staff, know that there's going to be market value increases in the commercial industrial side, which makes the residential side decrease. So it should make the residential taxes go down. We are watching this and we think it's going to happen and we really do hope it happens. So then an impact wouldn't be as burdensome on the public.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councillor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported to set the general fund levy at $5,508,716. With the savings and the reduction coming from $40,000 from OPEB and the remaining portion coming from contingency to reach that number. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Friedle?
There will be an unintended consequence of having absolutely nothing to offer in contract negotiations. We're basically telling our staff by doing this that they will not be able to have a raise in their wages despite the fact that they just incurred, or at least those that live in Virginia, the costs that all the rest of us are concerned about. That's distressing to me, just FYI.
Thank you, Councillor Friedle. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Call, please.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedle?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Huffy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. So what about the budget year? We passed a levy, now we've got to pass the budget. That failed. So that, does that change our budget? So let's figure that out and vote now on the budget. We can do it at the next meeting? We can approve the budget at the next meeting, which is the 28th? All right, we'll hold that one in advance and we'll vote on the general fund adopting the budget. December 26th will set as the next council meeting and at that time, we'll hopefully adopt the budget for 2024. The levy has been set at $5,508,716. And then we'll wait for the following council meeting on December 26th to adopt the budget year for 2024. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, questions, concerns, and we'll see how this shakes out for calendar year 2024. So we'll move to item 9 point, committee reports, 9.1, the committee of the home meeting that was held on December 5, 2023. And I'll turn this part of the council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benison.
Thank you.
What do I do? What do I do? What do I do? Oh, we didn't do that. Okay. On our item 8.16, we have to set a violation hearing to make a decision on the appeal that was, that we heard last week from Mr. Carlson regarding his, the denial of his, his building up on North Side. So I'd like to have to make a motion to set another hearing or another, or appeal. What's that? A special meeting to accomplish this prior to the committee of the home meeting. So moved by Councillor Friedle, supported by Councillor Motley. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries item 9, committee reports 9.1. Motion carries, item nine, committee reports, nine point one, the committee, the whole meeting that was held on December 5th, 2023. We'll turn this portion of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennison. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee, the whole meeting on December 5th, 2023, we had a presentation by Eric Martin of Hawkins Chemical and Carol Ross from People Service regarding a trial of FX300 chemical at the wastewater treatment plant. The product that the city is currently using is expensive, and Hawkins has a new product that they'd like to try out. They do have to still get MPC permission to complete this, but they did want to come talk to us about it. It was moved and supported to approve the 30-day trial period of Hawkins Chemical for replacement of the current FX300 at the wastewater plant beginning as soon as final approval has been obtained from People Service and the MPC.
So move for discussion.
Move to approve by Council Friedle for the unfunded mandate. Once again, is there support? Support by Council Johnson? Is there any further discussion? This is a replacement for the chemical we're now using, which is, this is supposed to be a cheaper chemical, and if it works out, we can utilize that. The trial was approved by the MPC, but this particular chemical cannot be stored outside. We have to find some inside storage for it. So that's what came out of the committee, the whole meeting. Council Friedle.
So you're saying this is going to cost us for the analysis by the MPC as well as the storage?
No, no, the MPC has to approve any different chemicals we use, and then they also have to do, they set a monitoring schedule to make sure that our values don't decrease or increase. So they just need permission from MPC to do that.
The cost savings that we could incur even from the shipping from Minneapolis versus Ohio, that's the reason we consider.
It'd be huge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it's just less cost for this particular chemical if it works. But still, we get no funding for it. It's a mandate by the MPC, just like a little bit of savings on this new chemical if it works. So it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Matt Reader, engineer from SEH, was present to discuss an updated resolution he needed for the local road improvement program. The dollar amounts that they were allowing for this year, for the 2024 grant cycle has actually increased to 1.5 million, so we needed to update the resolution to match the request. It was moved and supported to approve the updated resolution for the LRIP grant funds for the city street project to be submitted on Friday, December 8th, 2023.
Moved by Council Paulson, supported by Council Friedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
We had a presentation from Jenny Burbinay, our community development coordinator, regarding the housing study. There'll be more information coming forward. It was moved and supported to approve the contract for renewal with Rockstep Capital for the Virginia Police Department Community Outreach Center Office located at Uptown, Virginia.
Moved. Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Beyondich. Further discussion? Thank you for Rockstep for providing this, had no cost to the city, and it's really a great community outreach for our community officer to have a space available, for a safe space for people to come and speak to, because it goes to all these different communities. So thank you for Rockstep for stepping up to the plate and providing that free service for us. Council Friedle? Okay, thank you. It's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Speaking, we had one Earn Sick and Safe Time Resolution, MOU earlier today. At the committee, the whole meeting, we did approve the MOU with the MAP union for the Earn Sick and Safe Time effective January 1st, 2024.
Moved. Moved and supported. Moved by Council Johnson, I think it was, supported by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the MOU with LELS for the Earn Sick and Safe Time.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the MOU with IAFF for the Earn Sick and Safe Time. So moved.
Moved by Council Motley, supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt a resolution to approve the purchase of Public Works, for Public Works Department, a truck box for the 2024 GMC Sierra, one ton, from the 2023 capital equipment bond purchase. So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Motley. Is there support? By Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to direct staff to notify all unions that personnel attending daytime public meetings must be using leave if they are not on the agenda. So moved.
Moved by Council Motley. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. After a lot of thought and some of the communication we've had, I'm not going to be supporting this. I think, I'll be very honest, I think it's creating more animosity than it's worth. I think that we can trust our staff to come when they need to, and I think that, I don't believe that it's been a problem before today or before this last week, and I still don't think it's a problem. So I will not be supporting this after a lot of thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Council Johnson. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Motley?
With all due respect, Council Johnson, I disagree, but this is just going off of a motion long before my time by a prior mayor, so it's just reinforcing existing motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Motley. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Friedle?
I do tend to agree with Council Johnson. I think that we have responsible employees that would not be sitting here attending things unless they felt the necessity to do so. And I think it's, I think it's an unnecessary edict. I think that it's not an abused period of time, to my knowledge. So thank you.
Thank you. And Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just for clarification, there's already in place, we just have not been enforcing it, that any employees that are attending any of the meetings, they have to attend them, they must be using personal leave if they are not on the agenda. And what this motion is on item H is to direct staff to notify all the unions, but that's already on the books, so either they're going to get notified or they're not, but either way, they're not going to get paid when they come to a meeting because that's already on the books. Is that correct? So we're not doing anything other than sending out a notification that that motion was made many years ago, and we just have not enforced that motion, or enforced that resolution, excuse me, the resolution was made. So all that we're asking staff to do is just to notify all the unions, to remind them of that. And so if employees, if we didn't send that out and employees show up to meetings during the daytime, during their work hours, then they will not be paid, and that's already a resolution on the books. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Paulson. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so the motion is to notify. You've already been notified, so we're going to notify them again, that's fine. Well, we're notifying them now, apparently, so. And I agree with Council Friedle and Council Johnson that, you know, in a good faith gesture to allow a negotiations to go on, to select one or two people from a bargaining unit to move forward and help with the negotiation, I don't have a problem with that. And the reason I don't have a problem with it is because it's a good faith gesture, number one. And number two, when I was working as a union's president and a representative, and on the other side as a management team, we had that in a contract that says you can have up to two or three people negotiating if they're elected to the position. So if there's a way that somehow that can be proffered in some way, I'm going to vote yes because it's the motion is to notify. Okay, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Friedle?
Are there any exemptions, such as department heads, union stewards, or any other people that would commonly be attending, but not necessarily on the agenda, that at times are able to chime in and provide us with an information for decisions that need to be made? Or is it just a blanket for everybody?
Brian, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a lot of ways this can be handled. One of the, one of the most common ways to handle it is to indicate generally to the staff in accordance with my understanding of the law, is that generally if you're engaged in some personal activity during the work hours, you've got to take personal time. Of course, that's always, if we, if there's a member of the union that we need at a meeting or that the council requests, then they're following a directive of their employer, and of course, they would be paid if they appear at the request of a council member.
Okay, so could you clarify for me one more time? I know we talked about this at the committee, the whole meeting. So, so that includes? Contract negotiations as well?
So, Mayor, I've never, I haven't seen the previous motion that was made.
All right.
But.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a look at them. I'd like to see that motion disseminated to all of us, please. Thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion for the motion to notify all the unions? Is there, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Friedle? Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich? Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli? Huffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you.
The final motion from that meeting was to, a motion to allow Attorney Lindsey to set negotiation session with AFSC. So moved.
Moved by Council Motley. Is there support? By Council Friedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. No further items, thank you. Commission liaison reports on our item 10. Does any council have a commission liaison report they'd like to disseminate this evening? Council Beyondich.
Last night, at planning and zoning, and Wanda was in attendance, I was, I thought the commission did a good job communicating, I hope, with you, even though it wasn't the result that you were hoping for. They took the time to explain and go through things, and I unfortunately had to leave the meeting a little bit early, but Jenny has been working on. I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council Beyondich. Yes, we've been diligently working on our zoning, or chapter 11 ordinance amendments, and we went through quite a bit of material last night on some, hopefully, improvements to that ordinance in terms of terminology, grammar, just kind of better understanding, you know, laying out kind of more common language so that we all understand it, and then looking at some, you know, maybe errors and typos, things of that nature, and hoping to possibly suggest some district changes in terms of zoning. That sum it up? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make a comment. Thank you, Wanda, for coming and spending the whole time. I know that you went to enormous expense in order to just replace a fence that is technically on the city property that's been there for 35, 40 years or more. And I know there are a lot of other residents in town that don't comply right now either, but they choose not to replace their fence. They might place, replace a board, or they might repaint, or they might replace a panel, which is not a violation of the zoning ordinance. But when you take the whole thing down and then you want to put it back up, it's a violation of the zoning ordinance. That has to change. There has to be on a case-by-case basis. I understand the new ordinance, they have to, you know, accomplish that, but this is Virginia, Minnesota, a small community. I think, I think we have to re, take a look at what that zoning ordinance is, because there's a lot of people in this community that are in violation of it right now. They just aren't replacing that particular thing. So I empathize with you. I know you called me on the phone on other occasions. It was a huge expense for not. So thank you. Sure, come on up, if you like, and please state your name for the record.
Wanda Hamlin. All I wanted to do was put the fence where it was, a picket fence, and make it look better. So if people are going to find out that they have to have a survey in order to do that, they're going to leave their fences looking awful. In fact, the other question I have is there was a fence that this was attached to along this side on, on the avenue. So now I find out that isn't on my property at all, and it's the city's, and it's a blight issue. It needs either painted, it's rotted boards, it needs taken down. So I would like the city to take that down if they come and look at it and it's a blight issue. It's not my blight issue anymore, you know, it's the city's. So that's something they're going to have to think about too, you know?
Thank you, Wanda. Appreciate that very much. Anything else, Council Beyondich? Okay, thank you. Council Motley?
Could we put her address in as a list for blight? Or the, whatever is?
It's not blighted, no.
I mean, I mean, our property, can we get that fixed for her? If it's, she said it's, can it get looked at?
It will be because now. I don't know, or anything. An example of what will happen. If you fix their fence, you have to have a survey done. I have an estimate of 1,200 to do it.
Come on up, if you want to finish your council, everybody can hear.
1,200 to do it, 1,700 to do it. Luckily, I had Northern Lights did it. They gave me a very good price. And, but it, the thing is, people aren't going to fix it. They're going to look worse than if you let them replace a fence where it was in the first place. It's a picket fence coming around the corner. You know, you'll be able to see, to turn the corner there on Sixth Avenue. One other thing, and then I'll stop. They did offer me a variance that it's a three-foot fence, what was there, and on the corner, it said you're supposed to put a two-foot. They said it could be three-foot. And then they also said that I could move the fence, I can put it on the line, on the property line, but that would be moving it back. And if, if I ask you to go by the house at 6018 Street South, it's a little yellow house, it had a white picket fence, and if you see where you put that back, I mean, I'd, it would look like I'm crazy that I put a fence halfway in my yard. You know, I'm not going to do that. So it looks like unless the council changes something at the next meeting, that they're going to make us take out all those stakes that are cemented in. And some of the stakes are higher, but they would be cut down, you know, to the three-foot fence, so. But I just, you know, ask you to drive by it and see what it looks like, okay? Thank you.
You know I was there.
Pardon?
You know I was there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Wanda. Okay, item 11, department head reports. Any department have a, do they have a report they'd like to give this evening? Britt, do you have anything more to offer? Brian, anything from legal?
Nothing.
Okay, Pam, anything? Sheri?
No.
Jenny?
I do have some exciting news in the world of zoning.
Well, we could use some exciting news. Thank you.
With the help from St. Louis County GIS staff, we were able to get our zoning map up onto the county land explorer, so citizens can go on and find what the zoning is on their property, staff can use it, we can do some analysis based on what's out there to improve, you know, zoning in the city, and then improve ordinance amendments as well. I find that very exciting, that we're able to do that now digitally instead of having a PDF map. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. And if you have any questions on how to use it, anybody in the public has questions on how to use it, feel free to give us a call. I'm happy to help you.
Thank you, Jenny, very much.
Okay, is that?
Council Motley?
Is that on our website, the Minnesota, or Virginia Men, or?
It's not currently linked onto our website, but it is on the St. Louis County.